Staff meeting, I would ask the boys on the dais to begin to introduce yourselves.
Kristi, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Strehouse.
Paludo County Administrator.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We're going to go ahead and get started, we got a pretty packed agenda today. We'll start off with item number one, which is the financial model update on 1% occupancy tax regarding the convention district. We'll turn over to Mr. Aludo.
Thank you Commissioners, appreciate that. So I know we were having a bit of technical difficulties before on the screen, but I think we've got it resolved to the point where we can show the presentation, that's great. Will my clicker still work Kristi?
It should.
Okay, let's test, alright, cool. So happy to report out today to the Board on just a general status update on the convention district project, provide the Board with an update on the finance plan, and also specifically talk to the introduction of the 1% additional transient occupancy tax. So I'm going to walk, I'm going to try to walk through this presentation as quickly as possible, the Board's been recently updated on some of this. We've done presentations in the past as well, but we'd also indicated that prior to moving things forward, that we would come back and report publicly on the financing plan specifically before the Board was asked to consider the 1% occupancy tax. So just in terms of the agenda for the presentation, and talk a little bit about the Duke Energy Convention Center Development Plan, and what that includes, just so anyone watching from home has an understanding as to what we're talking about and why we would even consider an additional 1% occupancy tax. The primary reason for the presentation today is to talk about the financing plan, and to provide a report out to the Board on the financing plan and its viability. We'll also touch on the Headquarter Hotel Development Plan, and then provide a schedule update for the Board as well. So first things first, the Duke Energy Convention Center Development Plan. When we talk about the entire convention, Convention Center District and the development plan, just want to be clear about what we're talking about because we're really talking about multiple items. So first item is on your, on the slide is the approximately $200 million renovation of the Duke Energy Convention Center, including new public plaza on the former Millennium Hotel site. We're also talking about a new convention headquarter hotel on the current parking lot at Fifth and Plum. And then we're talking about the redevelopment of some of the other publicly controlled assets in this surrounding area, including the Wex Garage, the development that's going on at 435 Elm, et cetera. I'm going to focus my, the core of my update today on really the first two of these. Both the convention center itself and the headquarter hotel have been discussed as needs by the county going back for years. And so today, we just want to talk a little bit about the viability and next steps financially on each of these. Just again, for folks to under, under the Board is probably getting a little tired of this particular slide, but just so we understand all the properties that are under public control, that's something that does set us apart from what we typically see in other urban communities where we have a lot of land under public control, which enables us to do some things as it relates to the Convention Center District to really make some substantive and transformative changes in this district moving forward, which we don't typically see in a lot of other communities. So the Duke Energy Convention Center Project itself, and so as this is majorly a renovation project, I wanted to just spend a little bit more time today walking through the scope of the project from a renovation perspective than that perhaps we've done in the past, I'm not going to spend way too much time on this, but there's been a lot of good questions asked about the nature of the project, renovation versus expansion, et cetera, and why renovation, not expansion. So first, just at a very high level, the Duke Energy Convention Center is in need of significant renovations and modernizations. We'll walk through this here in a second. And importantly, those are what the resources that we currently have will support in terms of a project. So we've done some past analysis to show that that renovation combined with a headquarter hotel will continue to drive economic improvement, will continue to drive viability in the convention, local convention market, and that not doing anything in that, from that magnitude would spur a retraction or a contraction in that, in that market. So if we're talking about a renovation, whoops, hit the slide too fast. Talking about a renovation, we've got several things in mind here, I don't know if I'll need the pointer or not here. But first and foremost, I think we want to make sure that we're making the convention center modern, that it has the amenities desired by convention groups, that it's nimble and can be fully utilized, that it's technology enabled, and that it's efficient, and that it's accessible. So the projects that you see, or the project as it is laid out from a renovation perspective, does a host of things. I'm just going to walk through these very briefly. First, and these are not in any particular order of importance, but first and foremost, the facade overhaul. The Board has seen presentations on this before, the facade is outdated, it needs modernizing. But primarily, the reason for the facade overhaul is to get rid of some of the obstructions created by the solid wall on the center, and also to bring in additional natural light into the building, just making it a more, making some of these areas more programmable. We are also talking about replacing many of the different building systems that are currently in the center. So there, there are multiple aging systems in this building that require attention now, that need to be upgraded and replaced. Some of the current mechanical, electrical systems in, in the facility will be, need to be replaced within the next three to five years. The roofing system is in need of repair. The storm, the storm sewer sanitary systems are in need of repair, and probably some of these improved, the last improvements on these date back at least to the renovation of the 1980s. So there's a lot of renovation repair work that just needs to be done on the basic core infrastructure of the facility. But we're also looking to, there is, as we've talked about, there is some expansion of the exhibit hall space. The, the plan calls for about 12,000 square feet of planned expansion of the exhibit hall space. The primary goal associated with that expansion is to more seamlessly connect the east side of the exhibit hall into new programmable outdoor space, and a plaza that would run across Elm and over to the former Millennium Site. And it also allows for the center, center to go through a seamless expansion across that street in the future. There's going to be some improvements to the entrances here as well, redesigning and rebuilding the Fifth and Elm entrance, putting in a new Sixth and Elm entrance as well. All of this designed, number one, to open up the space, make the space again more user friendly, the circulation dramatically improved, and also create different entrances and different space so that the the facility can be used by multiple events simultaneously. The meeting rooms and the ballrooms will be upgraded, some of this will be aesthetic, but also from a technology perspective, making sure that we do things like separate the networking systems associated with the internet, with, with AV systems, with security, so that these things better operate, and that people that come, and groups that come, conventions that come never experience a problem associated with technology access within the building. We've got some energy, as we upgrade a lot of the building mechanical systems, we have the opportunity also to make them much more energy efficient, so that's, that's a good thing. I touched on a little bit about flexibility, I think one of the things, as if we're doing a renovation and we're trying to renovate in a way that that not only improves the infrastructure, but makes the center more usable for groups, is to make sure that we take space that is currently underused or unused, turn that into programmable pre-function or function space, and enable it to be used by more than one convention group at a time, which is something that historically the Duke Energy Convention Center has, has lacked. So for example, up on the third floor, there's, the, the plan conceptualizes by the junior ballroom, expanding that space, putting it into where it can serve as pre-function space that will, that will blend into a new outdoor terrace, turning what is currently a very underutilized space into a highlight of the building. We also include here, creating quality programmable outdoor space. This would, includes the space over at the Millennium, the former Millennium Hotel, and creating space as desired by convention seekers and convention goers, similar to what they're getting now in places like Boston, Phoenix, Minneapolis, St. Louis, et cetera, where they've added on outdoor space, programmable outdoor space. And finally, better integrating ADA accessibility into the building in places where it is needed. Just some current project updates on this, so as the Board is well aware, we have Moody Nolan that's currently on as the lead architect for, for this project. From a construction management perspective, we have Messer in cooperation with, with Traversity and Josten, which are the two MBEs on this that will account for up to, or will account for 40% of the construction management partnership. I do want to highlight, I believe tomorrow, I think tomorrow and Thursday, there are some networking events at the Duke Energy Convention Center, I think starting at 5:30. I think tomorrow is the one for MBEs, I think Thursday is, is the one for the building trades as well. So folks that are looking to learn more about the project, learning how they can participate are, are free to, to go down to that event. I think there's an RSVP, so if people are watching, feel free to call my office, and we'll get them to the right place there. Just an update on the schematic design, we are currently still in schematic design. The construction team continues to go through cost estimates based upon drawings, and then re-identifying value engineering opportunities to keep making sure that the, the project fits the needs of the convention center while at the same time staying within our resources. I just want to also walk through a few renderings, the Board has seen some of these, but not all of them as they continue to get refined. I don't think some of these have been shown publicly yet. This is obviously the existing Fifth and Elm Street entrance. This is a holistic view of the, of the center as updated in the most recent design update. Another image looking down the, looking down the side. This is the Fifth and Elm Street, some of these are still going through some design renovations, so some portion of these might not be entirely up to date with the, with the design drawings, but nonetheless, you can see the, bringing in a more natural light and the modernization of the facade. This is the existing Fifth and Plum Street with the facade. This is the proposed entrance at Sixth Street, so again, creating that entrance on Sixth Street to facilitate the ability to bring in more than one group at a time, segregate those events so that they have their own pre-function and function meeting space as well. There's some images of the interior where you can see from here to here, the opening up of the space, making sure that again, there is the ability to not only create a lot more light, but also create a lot more usable space on the floor, especially from a pre-function perspective. Board has seen some of these before, so I'm not going to dwell on them. And then you have the outdoor plaza as well, you can see how the east side of the, of the exhibit hall blends seamlessly into Elm, and then obviously into the, the outdoor plaza as well. So moving from the renderings, just into really what is the purpose of the presentation today, and that is the, the financing plan update. The renovation is, of the convention center is a $200 million renovation. It's, the, the bonding for this will produce capacity for the renovation of the convention center and also the Millennium Hotel site. I did want to just take a, a bit of a, of a moment here, just to talk a little bit about how we got here from an occupancy tax perspective, because the dollars being used to fund this project are, excuse me. The dollars being used to fund this, this project are transient occupancy taxes, which are essentially lodging taxes. These are taxes paid by individuals who come and spend nights in hotels in Hamilton County. You can see the history of this, of this, the lodging tax going back into the early 90s. As, in particular, as we get into the mid 2000s, you can see the dramatic trajectory and upward trajectory of this fund. And it was in that time period between 2015, 2018, that there was ongoing discussion about both a headquarter hotel and a renovation and expansion of the Duke Energy Convention Center. And you can, and you can understand, given the, given the trajectory of those revenues, why a, an expansion and a renovation were considered as possible in the near future. And then we come to the events of 2020 and 2021, and the, and the COVID-19 pandemic. And you just see the absolute decimation of that revenue stream in, in 2020. What is a fantastic story is the degree to which those revenues have, have recovered. You know, I don't know that they've recovered well enough to say that we're, we have confidence that they'll continue on that same trajectory from 2010 to 2019. But I can say that in 2023, we're looking to exceed 2019 revenues, which was the best year we had ever had. So the, the good news is, is that we, the occupancy taxes recovered, which helps us again now be in a position of looking to, within the available resources we have, fund the renovation of the Duke Energy um fund the renovation uh of the Duke Energy Convention Center, which in turn is important for attracting uh that headquarter hotel, which is critically important for the community uh as well. Um, on the, on the finance plan, the, the finance plan, as the board is aware, refinances several of the existing bond issuances uh for the convention center and for the Millennium Hotel, in addition to producing the project revenues for the renovation project. It relies upon the increase, uh an increase in the, in the, one of the county's occupancy tax streams by one percent uh to, and for those dollars to be allocated to capital costs. Uh, it also relies upon Visit Cincy contributing three million of existing occupancy tax allocation and some cash contributions from both the city and the county. The board has seen these doc, uh these uh spreadsheets as well, but this just shows the sources and uses associated with the project. Uh, it shows the uh, the total bond proceeds at uh, at two hundred seventy-seven million uh and the uses, um, the primary use being the uh, the new project funding at two hundred million and the paying off of the original debt issuance at ninety-five million. This is a little bit difficult to read, but this shows how uh the revenues come into um into the system uh from the various occupancy taxes. And when we talk about the occupancy tax, um we're talking about um a four percent occupancy tax at the city of Cincinnati, although a portion of that goes to operating expenses at the Duke Energy Convention Center. Um, a three and a half percent occupancy tax um uh from uh the, the county, uh plus the one percent additional as authorized by the Ohio General Assembly during this past budget, and then three million um contribution annually from, from Visit Cincy. Um, in the end, what this shows uh is that the revenues that are produced from uh, from these revenue sources are sufficient to cover um the various uh debt tranches uh that would be taken out in order to fund uh this particular project and produce uh a uh, a stream of residual dollars um that have historically, as the board is aware, been um allocated on a pro-rata basis between the county and the city uh for um various purposes allowed by um local and, and state law. Um, I can go through that, that waterfall process more if, if desired. Um, but just uh for the purpose of this presentation, I just wanted to make it clear that uh under the growth scenarios that we've looked at, the uh, the model does continue to produce residual. Um, we are uh modeling for sake of residual purposes, a four percent growth in the occupancy tax, which, which we think is still conservative based upon trends we've seen in the past. As we go to issue bonds for this, we're probably showing the rating agencies uh something more along the lines of two, two and a half percent growth, uh just to be more conservative with the rating agencies. As I indicated, the project is contingent upon a one percent occupancy tax increase. Uh, there is in your packets today, commissioners, uh resol- was uh titled Resolution Number Thirty-eight, levying an additional one percent hotel lodging tax. Um, this is here, it's in, it is in draft form. Uh, the thought that, the thought is, is that if the board wanted to consider this, it could consider it uh for the October fifth meeting. Um, the resolution, if, if that were the date, the resolution, I believe, calls for implement, uh the effective date uh of November first. And I can say that we have been in touch with uh the Hotel Association, and we've talked with them on two different occasions specifically about this. Um, and so they, they have indicated to us, as has the state Hotel Associate, Association, that they would be willing to assist um with uh getting that word out to make sure that hotels had an appropriate amount of time to make changes to their financial systems, et cetera. Moving to the headquarter hotel development plan, some renderings here first that I know the board has already seen. Uh, first and foremost, as the board is aware, Portman Holdings uh was uh selected um much earlier this year as the preferred hotel developer um for, for this project. Uh, the goal of the project is a, flipping through the uh uh renderings, the goal is an eight hundred room convention headquarter hotel. Um, currently, the, the hotel is in uh negotiations between Portman uh and Three C D C, uh and they're continuing to negotiate the terms of that hotel based upon the hotel market conditions, interest rates, construction costs, et cetera. Uh, the hotel, as is the case with most, uh if not all, headquarter hotels, convention hotels, at least in a, in today's modern age, um requ- does require, does have a, a, a gap, a financing gap that requires, would require some public support. Um, just for those who may be watching at home, uh convention hotels typically require some sort of a public subsidy into them primarily because uh the, the cost is a little bit higher, given the amount of meeting space, ancillary room space that is being added uh into the hotel to accommodate conventions. Also, uh the additional room block commitments that they are making and the room rates that they are committing to offering below market uh to attract those conventions, all of which at the end of the day affect the financials of that hotel and thus require some level, level of public subsidy. The initial proposal we received from Portman uh shows a four hundred and eighty million dollar cost for eight hundred rooms plus roughly eighty thousand square feet of ancillary meeting room and ballroom space, which I didn't talk about earlier um in the convention center project, but that eighty thousand square feet um would in some way be connected directly uh to the convention center, allowing that meeting space and ballroom space to be accessed by conventions uh in the Duke Energy Center. Uh, the anticipated funding gap is about thirty-three percent of the project cost, or a hundred and sixty million. Again, you're not, uh, folks at home won't be able to read this, uh, but what this does show is in some of our comparable communities, whether it's Salt Lake City, Kansas City, uh Washington DC, uh Oklahoma City, um we see uh the, the amount of funding gap that we are seeing in this project is very uh consistent, if not maybe on the low side uh of what we have seen with some of these other uh projects as well. In terms of closing that gap, uh and this is what we're uh working on right now, uh is looking at various strategies for closing the gap, including hotel tax revenues specifically generated by the convention center hotel, a real estate tax abatement, a new community authority is, is in place down at the banks, uh serving a targeted area around the convention center. Um, there has already been an application submitted uh for uh the Transformational Urban Mixed Use Development Tax Credit uh or, or TMUD um that uh was submitted just a couple of weeks ago. Um, and we were also, we also would be pursuing other, other state capital sources as well. The schedule update, um not to put too fine of a point on this, but just to uh for the, so the public is aware, for the Duke Energy Convention Center uh design and construction project, we're looking at starting construction in July of twenty-four with that project wrapping up in January of twenty-six. From a financing perspective, we have some milestones here. Uh, we have consideration of the, of the one percent um on October fifth. Uh, there's also um uh final development agreements and, and some cash funding from the city and the county that would need to follow uh shortly thereafter, but we'd be looking to bond the project early next year uh with the financing closing occurring uh in May uh of twenty twenty-four. And on the hotel, uh we are looking at, uh, the, the TMUD application is currently in, uh so we are waiting on, on the results of that. Um, there has been some discussion in the community about the, uh, that application and specifically the number of rooms um in the application, so I just wanna be clear about that. The target is still an eight hundred room hotel uh for the convention center hotel. Uh, six hundred and fifty rooms was listed on the application because at that point, the tax credit available to the project was maxed out. Um, and the concern being that if we had, we could say eight hundred rooms, we won't get a dime more in tax credit for that, but if we for some reason had to drop to a lower number, say seven fifty, then the project could penalize in terms of its, its tax credit, and we didn't wanna create that um, that downward spiral of coming down, getting penalized, and then having an additional gap that we would have to fill as well. So a couple of things to happen over the course of the next uh several months on this, including the TMUD award announcement, uh finalizing the development agreement, which we're hoping for in early twenty twenty-four, beginning construction in the third quarter of twenty-four, uh and completing construction uh in the third quarter of twenty twenty-six. Um, so commissioners, I tried to go through that as quickly as I possibly could um and keep everyone awake, but um that is the, the general update on the financing plan and the project. Happy to answer any questions, um if there are any at this point, commissioners.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I'm going to open it up to Vice President Drew House. Any questions or comments?
Um, I have no questions. I do have some comments, though. Um, so to me, th- this is a moment in time that we've been working towards since I got on the commission back in twenty seventeen. I remember um doing a community, we did public hearings uh out in the community, and we said to the community, if we were to do something big, something related to capital, what would your first priority be? And without exception, the number one priority was the convention center. Uh, and there were other things on, the arena was on the list, and there were other, other things on the list, but this was always at the top. And so at that time, and this has, you know, been a number of years ago, um, we conducted a study in conjunction with the business community to better understand um the marketplace, what we would need to do to our convention center in order to make it more marketable, to make it generate uh conventions, to generate revenue for our community. And so as we went through that, we started to think through um the approach to how to address um a renovated convention center. And so there were a number of elements related to this. The hotel was at the top of the list. Uh, we had a, a convention center hotel that was not functioning as a con- convention center hotel. People did not want to stay in this hotel, um and yet it was the one that was associated with the convention center. So that was number one. Um, there were also elements related to the renovation of the current facility to bring it up to date, and this is back in twenty seventeen or twenty seven, or twenty eighteen, so e- even more relevant now. Um, there was some talk about expanding the exhibit space to make sure that we could compete with our, our set, and uh there was also talk about programmable space and, and using what we have to do more programming um in the convention center. And so that was kind of the context in which we entered this idea of what we could do with the convention center. We wanted to do it in concert with the city of Cincinnati and with the other communities impacted by the um hotel motel tax. And so we were on our way uh in our thought process on, on how to, to get this done, uh and we were making sure that the hotel motel tax, or the TOT as it's referred to, was paying for this, because it's a user fee. The, the TOT is something that is paid for by people that come to visit our community. And so it's a bed tax, uh it is not related to the general fund, and it was very important to us that we make sure that this project were to be funded through the TOT. And so then COVID hit, and uh, and as you can see, and I, the, the graphic is, it's, it's kind of astounding really when you look at it. Uh, what happened between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty was that our revenues dramatically dropped, and so all of the revenues that we had in place in that fund were reduced, and they, they dropped to a level at which we had to say to ourselves, all right, we can no longer do all of this. Um, what remains at the top of the list and what can we afford to do? And so uh, and, and that, you know, pervades in, into the conversation we're having today. And so uh, we talked about the number one domino that had to drop was the Millennium Hotel. And so in twenty twenty, this commission invested in that property, tore down the Millennium Hotel to give us some opportunity on that space. And so to my view, that was the first domino to drop in this whole conversation, because without that, no hotelier was gonna come here and build a headquarter hotel. They literally told us that. Every single one of them told us that. And so we knew that that was the right thing to do, and so that's what we did. Uh, and so we um then talked about um what we could do with the amount of money that we had left, it, knowing that it will grow, and it is growing, and I'm delighted to see that it's growing, but to um afford the expansion, it's gonna take more money than we have right now. And so we're trying to get going, and so the idea is to peel off some of these things that we know need to happen uh and get going on them while we rate, wait to continue to build up the reserve uh to be able to afford the expansion. So what's in front of us then now is the renovation um that was shown to us through the slides and the headquarter hotel. Those are the two things that are in front of us. And so um the renovation, you know, i- it's much needed. Uh, we will reclaim some of that space to the east, uh that is green space, and make sure that that's programmable space. Other cities are doing this. I've been to conventions where other cities are doing this, and there's a lot of opportunity on that space, uh and so I'm very excited about that opportunity. We also have said in the hotel, we wanna gain some space for meeting rooms, for the uh junior ballroom, for connectivity to the ho- or, or the convention center, and make sure that there's some space there also that we can gain. It's not only in the convention center, but rather connected to the headquarter hotel. And so we've seen renderings of what that looks like, and, and the renderings um are very different from what uh our previous headquarter hotel looked like and uh very forward-thinking, and, and I like the connection to between the headquarter hotel and the convention center, and that's even programmable space. Uh, so I think we've kind of used every piece of every um space in the hotel and in the convention center that we can, and so, and I think that's the right approach. So um we needed to then um have other partners step in here because we need to make sure that the financing works, and so um we uh entered into an agreement with Three C D C, with the city of Cincinnati, and started to move collectively. So instead of looking at just the um convention center and the hotel, we're looking at a campus. We're looking at all the properties that are in this district, because really the project is about revitalizing a part of town that has not seen a lot of energy in a very long time. Uh, some of that related to the, the lack of conventions that we've been able to entice into the region, but also a lack of investment um by way of the private sector and the public sector. And so as you look at the district, you realize the county owns some of the property, the port has some of the property, the city has some of the property, the private sector has some of the property, and so how to look at this collectively and say, what is the best approach for the district so that we're not doing this piecemeal, you know, the city's doing this, and the private sector's doing that, and the county's doing this, but rather do it together? And so uh we entered into this agreement, the city of Cincinnati signed on to an identical agreement, and so um we have been moving in that direction. We also needed the ho- help of the state of Ohio to allow us to consider this uh one percent increase in the TOT. Um, they have helped do that. The delegation was, from my understanding, a hundred percent supportive, and so now we have the ability to do that, to help finance not only what we've got in front of us with the renovation and the hotel, but also to think about that expansion of the exhibit space that we all know needs to eventually take place. It's just a matter of getting that funding in place, hopefully within the next, I, I don't know how many years, um, but to move us in the direction that we know we need to go, to expand the exhibit space, to get us to the final product that we wanna offer. And I, I will say as a caveat, it, it's interesting, because we started this so long ago, there was no conversation about moving that expansion to the west. It was primarily to the east. We did look at the north, we looked to the south, but it was primarily to the east, east, and so the millennium played into that conversation. Now we're having discussions about the bridge and the redo of the bridge and freeing up property to the west of the convention center. So I don't know how that will all play out. I think there's more to come on that, but I think it's really interesting that we now might have an opportunity to move the expansion to the west and keep the east for this programmable space that, that we've talked about and that's been shown to us. Um, so uh, again, to me, this is a, a moment in time, we've been working on this before I got here. I mean, to be fair, um, I started working on this in twenty seventeen, but there was work being done prior to that to get control of the Millennium Hotel. And so I feel as though, you know, we have come together primarily with the city of Cincinnati, with our Norman, northern um neighbors, also Sharonville plays into this. So um as we think about closing down the convention center to do the renovation, i- I mean, it will be disruptive uh to a degree. My understanding is there are five uh groups that had conventions here that had to be moved, and that some of the trade shows that come down on an annual basis will miss a year, but I, and I've, I've heard the idea about not closing it all down at the same time, but rather doing it in phases. Um, I think the argument, though, against that is, first of all, it will take longer, and it, it is, it will be very disruptive, and we have an expansion, an expansion of the Sharonville Convention Center coming online right now, that the county also invested in. Uh, and so I think the timing is ideal for these conventions to look at an expanded convention center up in Sharonville for their needs. We will lose some, uh, but in the end, uh, given that shorter timeframe, I think we do stand to gain a lot. And so I am supportive of this project. I've been supportive all along and um am grateful that the state of Ohio now has put us in a position along, you know, with our delegation advocating for us to move forward with some of the financial uh, you know, the, the, the stack so that we can get this thing going. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumars.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I think Commissioner Drew House must have been reading my notes.
Actually, I think Commissioner Drew House must have been reading my notes because I was actually going to bring up about construction and if it was going to begin, if it happened, if it would begin on the third quarter of 2024, to explain to our residents the lack of access and the rationale of closing the whole thing down. So you just said that, but I also wanted to indicate it that I know for sure, if this does happen, that there have been concerted efforts to notify the vendors that possibly would have been using this facility during that time. So that's what I wanted to bring up, and that was the only comment that I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I want to start off my comments and questions with the caveat of where I'm coming from as a representative of the over 212,363 people that elected me. And coming from a background of, I've been on the city when we did our first expansion of convention center, the one we have now, and it was very tough. We had to get stayed, and we had to get all the folks on board to get it expanded. And that's why we ended up where we are with the convention center. And then once we expanded it, we had the toughest time in Cincinnati history, where people were canceling conventions. And even our leadership at the CBB at that time quit and said, I can't sell this place. I'm out. And as the vice mayor, who was not on the payroll of the CBB, but one who had experience in marketing, I decided to get on planes and go myself in the deepest and toughest times to recruit conventions. And when I went there, I got a chance to hear what was the convention saying besides, of course, the other reasons that we were going through the toughest time. And one of them was, well, do you have this much exhibit space? We can't even talk to you unless you get this much exhibit space, this many hotels. And so I learned a lot about that industry and became very involved in the industry. Came back with conventions, bringing money, not just going and what I think. We brought conventions back. We brought the NAACP here twice. We brought the Shriners Convention that brought a lot of money here, twice. We brought Noble, Blacks in Law Enforcement, coming here, twice. They were booking the hotels, staying in the rooms. And then the space, we had activities on Fountain Square. And they said, man, this is different. We don't have this in other cities. And of course, the list goes on and on, and we were able to rebuild our convention and visitors bureau. So my commitment on bringing business, money, revenue, Cincinnati's in Hamilton County, is unmatched. But now we're getting into the specifics. We're in my industry now. I've been the deputy director of tourism for the entire state of Ohio and had to go to the 88 other counties that have convention and visitors bureaus and market the entire state. And so as we're moving forward, my only goal is for the taxpayers of Hamilton County, for us to get the best deal. We must get the best deal as possible. We can't move forward at all costs or any cost. The questions have to be asked, and they will be asked. And I will continue to ask those questions. It's just like going to a bank. When you go to the bank and you say, I want to get a loan for my business, they have some questions. When you go to the teller to even get your own money out, they've got, you give them your name, but they got some questions. If you don't answer the questions, you can't even get your own money. And so one of the things I wanted to be very clear down here is the way we are going to conduct our business. Whether we agree or disagree, I want Drew House to be respected. I want Dumars to be respected, and I want the taxpayers of Hamilton County to be respected. And so that's where the questions come in. And I'm pretty familiar with a lot of these projects. With that, I would ask if you would put on the board, I want to give a picture of where we are as a county. When we making decisions, we got to make decisions not as one project, not in one vacuum, but the whole thing. A lot has changed because we had COVID. COVID came after the Millennium Hotel was torn down. And these are just some of the projects that we'll be facing or are facing. And I think we talked about it last week. We can't do everything. And each of these projects wants some type of government help, whether it's a tax credit, a tax abatement, or tax cash, whether it's the general fund or a restricted fund, but it's coming out of a fund of tax money. And that just, I didn't have enough room. It's more to come. And so we, as a county, got to make a decision on what's the best use and how do we squeeze the best deal to be able to accomplish progress, but not at the point where the homeowner goes under. Also in this backdrop, letters just went to every homeowner in Hamilton County mandated by the state of Ohio, not by the county commissioners and not by the county, but by the state of Ohio, where they will be reevaluating properties. And they said it's going to be one of the largest reevaluations going up that may get to your taxes. And so if we're baiting things and we're, we're going to tax over here and tax over there and a little bit over there, that stuff starts to hit you. And then you see who is really paying the taxes. The homeowners get squeezed. So when I ask these questions, we're looking at, how do we get to a positive place, but not at the expense of the taxpayers of Hamilton County that are trying to just hang on? So we could take that down. That's the backdrop of how I come up with all of the questions that I think need to be asked that I've been hearing from the taxpayers. So now we go to the convention district. And I wanted to say that I was not here, but I was a taxpayer on the outside looking in. And when Millennium was said it had to go, of course, and it, you know, and let's be clear, the Millennium Hotel was paying property taxes. And I asked them, was they behind on the property taxes? They weren't, because that's the first place you go when you're trying to get a property, you find out they're behind. So they were, we were bringing in property taxes. Some people were still booking those rooms, even though they weren't the best rooms, but they were booking some of those rooms. It was an 800-room headquarter hotel. And one of the things that conventions ask, they don't want five or six hotels. They want a host hotel, and we had 800. So the thought was, if we get rid of 800, we got to replace 800. And even with the, I pulled this, because when I got here, the World Cup was a big issue. This was the big document that Hamilton County signed, although we didn't get the World Cup, but we signed and said we would commit to everything that's in here. And in here, it has 800 rooms. It has 800 rooms. Hospitality hotel, 800 rooms. And we signed and said yes. So what's interesting to me, we didn't get the World Cup, but all of a sudden now, the hotel, which was once a top priority, has now become a secondary priority. And in this, I've been asking these questions. I want to thank you, Mr. Ludo. Finally, I've been asking him since December, I think, of 2021. You gave us a packet. I'd like to have this packet of questions online, where every taxpayer of Hamilton County can read it and can go along with us. I don't want just, I'm getting a packet and we getting a packet. This needs to be online, where every taxpayer, citizen of Hamilton County can get it. And I like to get some copies so I can get out into the community and see what they think about these answers. I'm concerned about the bait and switch. Hotel was the priority, 800 rooms. What we're going to be voting on or looking to vote on, this resolution you're presenting, Mr. Ludo, has nothing about financing the hotel. It's all about Covitzas Center. I love our ballroom. Our ballroom is, I mean, I've been all over the country. We got one of the baddest ballrooms in town. Everybody talks about it. We also are the only convention center, at least from my knowledge, that even allows African-American minority businesses inside convention center to sell food. Taste of Julia's, and I can, I think Scott's Barbecue and some others. And that helped us recruit conventions. So when I look on here and see $200 million, and I'm only getting 12,000 additional square footage, hey, that's a lot. Do you do the math? 212,000 additional square feet, and it's mostly outside. I have a lot of questions and concerns. In this packet of questions that you presented to us, I asked the question about, can the 1% that's going for hotel tax go to the hotel? And I think that is a legitimate question. Mr. Ludo, could you answer that question? Why not?
So the question is, can, what, can part of the 1% transient occupancy tax go towards the Headquarter Hotel project? So the very first answer to that, I think, is more of an arithmetic or math question. So with the 1%, with the project at the Duke Energy Convention Center, the needs of that project at 200 million, the full 1% is needed in order to provide the revenue needs to fill the, to fund those bonds. So mathematically, you couldn't take a part of that 1%, throw it over to the Headquarter Hotel project and still be able to do the Duke Energy Center project the way it has been scoped. From a legal perspective, I think there's a couple of different issues in not being an attorney. But having spoken with them about this particular concept, I think...
We have one right here.
I don't know that Michael has researched this. But what I would say is, I believe the legislation that was passed includes the term hotel within the legislation for the use of the 1%. So at a very high level, there is the ability to use revenues for the hotel. But there is, I would just caution that there's a lot more legal analysis. There's, there are constitutional issues in terms of the provision of credit to private entities that we would have to cross. So we would have to, in terms of the, the answer as to whether the 1% can go, statute permits it broadly, but it would require a very specific analysis of the situation to determine whether it could actually happen in this particular case, especially if everything is going to be privately owned.
Yeah, I would like to get that a legal analysis, because basically what you said, you said it possibly could. And we're not lawyers, and the lawyer's not here, but it could. And my question is, what changed from this document we signed legally binding, saying that we would have an 800-room host hotel in time for World Cup, which I believe would have been here, what, '26? And even in the news, because the reason we hurried up and said, we got to hurry up and sign with 3CDC, we got to hurry up and get this going, because we had this that it needed to be signed. And it needed to be signed for the hotel. And then I believe one of the quotes was, "It's critical to Cincinnati's ongoing FIFA World Cup bid for matches in summer of 2026." Keyword, "it's critical." So how does it now become uncritical? Because in this, all of the things I'm seeing and what we're going to be voting on, we're not, we don't have a financing plan for the hotel. Why is that last? But when we signed this document with World Cup, it was first. How did, that's where I'm, it's hard for me to understand. How are you going to deliver it here by 2026 or 2025? And then I had something else that said we were going to be starting on it in '23. And according to this media report, and I'm just trying to figure out, how did all of that change? It said, moving toward building a headquarter hotel by 2025. Quote, "Without it, it will be nearly impossible for us to host the World Cup." This is just the first step of the process. We must move forward. How did it change? And that was, let me get a date, January 26, 2022. And now the hotel is kind of taking the back burner. I understand lots have been said, that the hotel people said they're not going to do that unless you beautify the Covitzas Center. But couldn't we give them a promissory note? That if you come and move forward, we will help do that versus kind of what we're doing the opposite. They're giving us a verbal promise that they're going to do the hotel if we spend $200 million. What changed?
So I'll just answer that briefly, Commissioner. I don't, I don't think anything has necessarily changed. I think the Headquarter Hotel and the convention district, or the convention center have always been linked very tightly together. They're synergistic with each other. The, you're correct, the hoteliers, or the developers, I should say, not necessarily hoteliers, the developers that came in who pitched the idea of developing Headquarter Hotel, each and every one of them that we interviewed indicated separately that their proposal was contingent upon some type of a renovation of the Duke Energy Convention Center. Not necessarily, and we asked very specifically whether that included a full expansion of the center or whether it was a renovation. And all of them were very clear that distinct from a full expansion, although everyone said, well, sure, if you can expand it, that's fantastic. But it at least needs to be renovated because it is deteriorating rapidly. As we went through in some of the presentation, the...
At that point, but could we have given them a promissory note, like they're giving us a promis, they're not even giving us a promissory note? Could we have said, hey, if you get this hotel going, we will put in writing, it will be, you know, binded, go get the notary. We will do this if you get this going. Why is it, we got to get going and we don't have anything? We don't have a notarized piece of paper.
So I'd answer that in a couple ways, just to put a finer point on the issue of the developers, because it speaks directly to Portman. Portman was, of all the developers, the one that was most specific about that issue. And they had said that their occupancy projections were based in, in large part on the renovation of the hotel. And they had the, I'm sorry, renovation of the convention center. If the renovation didn't happen, their occupancy projections for their hotel would drop by 20 to 24%. So it wasn't, I just want to be clear, especially for the public, Commissioner, that it wasn't just people saying very high level, oh yeah, please build a convention center. They were very specific about how their projections related into this. Now to your question about a promissory note...
Or a legal document to say, hey, if you sign with us and you get going with this hotel, we'll get going with the beautification versus now we're doing this and we don't have anything notarized, saying that we're going to get an 800 hotel. We have nothing notarized in this document, even what we're voting on. We're going to hotel occupancy, occupancy tax. There's still no real financial plan on the hotel. And that is, that troubles me.
So a couple of things to your questions, and they're good questions. I think that the, the idea of a promissory note would entail that both, both sides at that point were willing to say, I will do this for this. And until all of the terms of that hotel were negotiated, I don't even think the hotel would want, want to have had us sign a promissory note for something that they weren't committed yet with interest rate costs and local construction costs to say specifically, here's exactly what we're going to do. That was the purpose of the negotiation process. I would say, though, that irrespective of that point, that the convention center, and I don't want to downplay this, the board, the county, the city, everyone has been very clear that the hotel is the number one priority. That being said, we know that these things are inextricably linked with each other. The Headquarter Hotel and the ability to use that hotel to drive business into the convention center. The convention center, given its shape, needs to be repaired as well. So I think that the, what part of the answer to your question, Commissioner, I think would be that irrespective of whether we had a deal with Portman today, tomorrow, or whether we were still yet to do an RFP process, the absent renovation of the convention center, I do not think that a hotel would come. And we would, and I think even our consultant, Convention Sports and Leisure had remarked to this even a couple of years ago, where he said, if you do not do a renovation of the convention center soon, let alone expansion, you are essentially writing yourselves out of the citywide convention business because other communities will pass you by. You're not going to continue to get these groups. And then, once you've lost these big conventions, you've lost them for good.
We understand that, but we're losing them anyway because if you don't have, if you close them down for 18 months, you're losing business already. And the fact that a lot of people aren't coming if you don't have a headquarters hotel. What I'm trying to do is, whatever we verbally say to the citizens, because the taxpayers feel like we keep getting screwed. We were told when... We were told when we went with the two stadiums, we were told one thing, we got 30%. It was not in writing. We didn't get it. They're always, when it comes to the taxpayers, what we, what they're interested in, we're always cutting back. I'm trying to put an end to it. Whatever we told the taxpayers, if we said we're taking down 800 rooms, we're going to replace with 800 rooms. I need a notarized, just like this document here, that says development management services agreement, but there's no guarantees on the hotel. But everything else is in here. Cost overruns is in here. I mean, there's a section that deals with cost overruns, management fee of $1 million. Everything is in this document except the hotel. The hotel is, we gonna get around to it. And everybody knows whatever comes in last, it's not enough money left over. So I don't want to get a new funding model and we spend up everything we have in the convention facilities authority or the tot, as you call it. We spend everything up because we're, I got to vote on it before I even have a funding plan for the hotel. You're asking us to vote next week and we don't even have this yet. And then we voted for the wax garage. We've got a garage before we even got a hotel. And we said we needed the garage for a hotel. We're putting up $1.9 million in guarantee for a garage that's going to be functioning before a hotel is even broke any ground. And I'm just saying, we just can't do that. I'm trying to change the trajectory. Whatever we tell the taxpayers, they need it in writing, just like a business needs it in writing. And that's what I'm concerned about in this. We're going to move forward, use up all that money that we got, resource. And then we're saying the hotel is built on, the hotel financial model is built on a deck of cards. We don't have no notarized, I want something notarized to the people that we're going to get 800 rooms. And even in your report, you give yourself wiggle room that you say that 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 we may not get 800 rooms. So when it was advertised, I don't know if it's 17, 18 or what have you, it was 800. You lose 800, you gonna get back 800. And to say, well, we don't need 800 now to pay more and get less. I don't think that makes us competitive. The other thing. I want to get back on the exhibit hall space. You have on here. Well, I have, the question was, why is a broader expansion of the convention center not planned as part of this project? A lot is about an outdoor space and we have three seasons here. So we got a winter, we got a fall. And so some of that time we won't be able to use. And we do have Fountain Square down the street that has excellent programming. You said available resources do not yet support a broader expansion of the exhibit hall. That's where we make the extra money, the exhibit hall. That's how we get the bigger conventions. Some people will not even allow us to bid if we don't have so much space. So now we're coming in with the exact same number. You said the resources do not support it. While a further expansion may be desirable in the future. So we'd be right back here where we are now, talking about what can we do? It is first necessary, you see it, to modernize. The space. And then you went on to talk about, we have to then try to go back and find some more money. Now, when we come in and do these deals, we're talking right now, Millennium Hotel, the $55 billion debt. When we do these debts and these things, we don't just get extra money. We'll have a new debt and still don't get an expansion. I guess my question is, which I know is hard for the state, because it was hard for us to get the first expansion. When do you see us getting an expansion? With that millennium site that we paid $55 million on and we're just gonna have it as free space?
Yeah, so I can't predict right now when the when the current occupancy tax fund and that model will support an expansion. I think it's going to depend upon a lot of things, including which direction we go on the expansion. As Commissioner Dreyhouse mentioned, there are some different options that may be open to us in a couple of years that are currently not open. So I can't right now tell you what, when that model is going to allow for an expansion of the exhibit hall. But what I can tell you, and I just want to make very clear, is that we are talking, I think, in a similar vein, we are talking. About ensuring that through a renovation of the convention center and the attraction of a headquarter hotel. The ability to continue to drive an increase in that occupancy tax and to get additional conventions. So I want to be very clear, this is not about doing an expansion and then getting less business. We've spoken with consultants who are doing this in communities across the country. We've spoken with our local convention officials. And we feel very strongly that the types of improvements that we're talking about in this center and the desirability of those improvements to convention goers and and meeting planners. Together with the hotel are the things that will drive the existing book of business into that building. And will continue to drive additional groups to Cincinnati. I know for a fact that we've had conversations with numerous groups who have told us one thing. And that is, we are not yet ready to select Cincinnati. We will select Cincinnati when we see an improvement in your convention center, which is currently. A, it's been called many things, but a dog in the market and that we get in a a new headquarter hotel. So I think, just want to be clear, we're talking about not dropping in business, but making sure that we can continue to drive business into the community. Through these improvements that we currently have resources to afford.
On here, you also talk about the business we already have. And I don't want to be disrespectful to the conventions that have come and the people who have booked our convention centers. Because their, their, their business is important as well. You said that we would have some relocating cost of $131,000. Is that the number or is that estimated?
No, those are actual numbers provided by Visit Cincy, yes.
And then who's paying for them to be relocated?
Those are costs that the city of Cincinnati incurs.
And then also in the section of cost overruns, who does that fall under? I send this, is listed in what the county signed on.
You're talking about in terms of the development.
Development, yes, the development.
Yeah, cost overruns, I believe in that agreement are, I think, the way it's worded is that the the city, county, 3CDC will mutually discuss cost overruns if and when they happen. And to the degree they do happen, that a new financing plan will be put into 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 place to cover that. But there was specific, so it was, it was a bit vague in terms of how it would be covered, but it does say specifically. That consideration would be given to the fact that this is a city owned facility in terms of the covering of any cost overrun. So from my perspective, if we have a cost overrun, which we all hope that we will not. But if the project does experience a cost overrun, we put together a financing plan to see how we can, how we can cover that. How, and some of that could involve some technical considerations in terms of the financing that we're doing. But at the same time, we've acknowledged in that document that at the end of the day, this is a city facility. And that would play a strong role in terms of how we go about closing that gap.
Yeah, I appreciate because the language does not. It includes us as equal partners under the cost overrun section.
Equal part.
I mean, our name is equal, it doesn't say it's going to fall on the city.
Except that it does reference the city as the owner of the facility that is considered in the in that plan.
Yeah, I didn't know why we were mentioned, if, why would we be mentioned in the cost overruns? Also, you mentioned a $3 million, Visit Cincy. Would put in to this project. Talk about that.
So Visit Cincy has, so it's a little bit complicated. So there are multiple streams of occupancy taxes. The city levies their own occupancy tax, the county leverages a 3.5% occupancy tax to, that that goes to fund the debt service on the Duke Energy Convention Center. It goes to fund the debt service on the Millennium Hotel. It also, at the end, ultimately goes to fund some of the debt service on the Sharonville Convention Center. So you've got that occupancy tax. And there's a separate 3% occupancy tax that is levied by the county for for Visit Cincy. That it applies countywide and is specifically under Ohio law levy to. For the purpose of the operation of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we're here known locally as Visit Cincy. That produces somewhere between eight and nine million dollars a year. That is the primary operating budget for Visit Cincy. That's what they use to go out and make sure that they're attracting business to come to the city of Cincinnati and Hamilton County. To fill the convention centers and to fill the hotels. Visit Cincy, because, and this is just a little bit about the dynamic of convention and tourism markets. There's constantly this friction between, what do you do? Do you build and maintain the box where these things are going to go? Or do you market it? And the two have to play off each other. I think Visit Cincy has realized that at this point in time, we're at a critical juncture and that there needs to be more effort put into. Into making sure the box, the convention center is something where people want to come to. So they've agreed to put $3 million of that eight to nine million dollar annual 3% tax to debt service support for the financing that we're going to do. So that money is going to be there. The growth model that we've outlined shows that, and we've talked with Visit Cincy about this, that to the degree the growth performs as we think it will, that we will do what we can in the residual to get them back as much as they, as as we can to make them whole. So that they continue to, can continue to market the the community moving forward. They put themselves at risk by doing it because there is no guarantee that that will in fact occur. I will also say that Visit Cincy has historically received from the the county a $1 million additional grant for marketing, which under this scenario, that does not contemplate. So they've got some risk in the game, they've got some skin in the game, but I think they realize that it's necessary in order to make sure this project happens. So I hope that answered your question, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was looking at your answer on here. I just want to make sure, because when you say they're going to put in 3 million, basically, the hotel tax comes to this fund and we're a pass through of the tax dollars to. Visit Cincy, similar to what kind of, yeah, kind of like what sorta, when they put a tax on or whatever, it's tax that goes to there. But I was just concerned when you said that we would, they're going to put up 3 million. So is it like a loan? Because you had on here that you're going to give back them the $3 million. And that kind of alarmed me because when I first heard, I said, oh, they're going to put up $3 million. But you're saying that the 3 million will be repaid back. By the county or whatever through our hotel motel tax. So is it, is it more of a loan or or what, a loan without interest?
Well, not sure I exactly call it a loan, but I see what you're saying and and I would understand why you would term it that way.
Yeah, it's like me saying, I'm gonna give you $50. And then you get up and say, Alicia, I'm going to give you $50.
Right.
But I need the $50 back.
Yeah, so this all gets to, from a municipal finance perspective. The amount of revenue support that we would need to issue bonds in this amount. And the. The bond purchasers are not going to purchase those bonds unless they see that the revenue support is there to make sure that they're going to get their payments on time and and regularly. So this is, I would put this kind of in a have your cake and eat it too scenario. So that we want Visit Cincy to market and sell the heck out of this community. We want them to keep doing it, we want them to have the resources to do it. Visit Cincy has said, but we know that we can't market a dog. So we're going to put $3 million into this system. The hope is, is that the revenues produce strongly enough that at the end, we can turn around and give that money back so they can go out and do the good work of marketing this out into the community and get more people into fill the box. So loan, loaning it to the project, however you would want to term it. But I would say it's also something that's at risk because if the revenues don't perform, then the money doesn't, can't come back.
Right, well, that's like a loan. You're taking a risk when you give somebody a loan.
You do.
Hope they can pay you back. But I just think it needs to be identified differently so that folks understand what's really transpiring. The last thing is with the hotel not going on the millennium site. And I'm still concerned of us having a $55 million debt there and not making any money off of it. We don't make any money back off of it. People say, well, you're going to get the hotel. I'm getting hotel now and I ain't got to put up $55 million. Other hotels, I'm getting their tax now. So we're not getting anything really extra. But the hotel where it's going to be located, who owns that particular property?
That's owned by the port right now with, there's some operational relationship with 3CDC there as well.
So I'm going to just hit this part and I'm very, I know people get dicey about it and they shouldn't get dicey because we collect taxes from diverse people. Some of our biggest conventions that came here or African American conventions that came to this, to this county. And spent money and continue, I hope, to come to the county and spend money. But in 2008, 2019, there was some concern with having equity on the hotel. And the port authority was challenged on that and that was in 2019. But I think the statement holds kind of true today. The question was, couldn't there be ownership? In over the Rhine and for a lot of places downtown, there is no lack ownership of buildings. They're renting and if people go up on the rent, they'll wipe them out. We've got an issue right now over in Avondale on Burnett Avenue. They came in when the Jewish hospital got bought. Oh, we're going to be here, we're going to do this. And now the last standing black doctor, Dr. Melvin, the eye doctor, is being rushed out because they want to double his rent. And he'll be out and then there'll be no African Americans. So ownership is important. The thought, I guess, was raised by, at that time, the African American Chamber and some other black businesses. And in a statement, it read, in a statement, port CEO Laura Bruner, this was in the Courier, said, there will be no equity in the hotel. From the private sector because the current plans call for the port, calls for the port, who will own it and issue the tax exempt bonds sold to pay for it. And I brought this up. And she said, because that, they got strict rules. And so I had some concerns and that's why I said, well, maybe we should be over on the millennium side. But if they own both of them. So with this statement, I'm going to ask you, and I'm not talking about the 15% and, oh, I'm talking about ownership of the land. Because we've been giving land out for $1. This concerned me, this statement. This statement, there will be no equity in the hotel from the private sector, even though Portman is from out of town and I know they're diverse. I'm talking about ownership of the actual land. Because the current plans call for the port to own it and issue the tax exempt bonds to pay for it. Has that changed?
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll have to follow up on that one for you. I don't know precisely on that. I do know that when the, when the discussions immediately or initially occurred with the developer on this, that there were efforts to make sure that there was. Contacts made between the selected developer and minority interests, business interests in the community. Specifically to talk about equity positions in in the project, et cetera. But I don't know specifically, I don't know the article referenced, I'll have to look at that, but I'm happy to follow up with you more on it.
Yeah, and it's about land ownership. So I wanted to get answer to those questions. Now, these questions you gave us, I like to see, can this go up on a website where people can?
Certainly, yeah.
We can get that up quickly. You said it's a moving, a life, breathing document, a lot of moving parts. And the reason I was asking about this hotel motel taxes, because as we are looking at the. The Paycor Stadium and the Bengals lease, I believe it was Tennessee, part of their funding model came out of the hotel motel taxes. It's, I mean, it's true, we had a lot of fans in town, people were in hotels, the Bengals brought people to town. But Tennessee, part of their diverse, because we're going to have to look at some diverse funding models. We're trying to take it off the backs of just the taxpayers. And I wanted to make sure that we're not taking this and putting it all on this one thing, convention center. And now we got a hotel, no money, we got to find something else. We got a Bengal Stadium and a contract lease, we're trying to diversify that model. Take, you know, we, 96% of the the cost is on the taxpayers. We're trying to look for creative ways. But now when I say, let's go to that fund, don't touch that fund, we done used it all up. That's why I'm asking these questions, to give us the most flexibility. I want the best deal for the taxpayers. And I don't want to bait and switch. If we say we doing 800, I need it notarized that we're going to do 800 and we got to work our butts off to get to 800 rooms. Not having it subjective. Well, it's 800 a day and oh, at the end, we just ran out of money, we just can't do it. Because the whole deal with this came about from a headquarter hotel. That's how it all got started. And I don't understand how the hotel is, today, we don't have a funding plan and you're asking me to vote on a resolution of a funding plan. On, I guess, in a week. And I don't have that the hotel is, has. And I don't have that the hotel is, has, I don't have nothing notarized for the taxpayers to say that they will definitely get what we had told them we were going to get. So that's, those are my concerns. And I hope we can get this on the website and you can update it.
A couple of quick things on that. One, on that, we'll definitely get that up on the website. Number two, I'll get you an answer on the minority equity position issue. I believe that, that 3CDC and Portman are currently talking to some minority interests from an equity perspective as well. So I'll confirm that and get some information back to you on that. And then, let's see, the, the.
That one is tied to the land, is that, that's what she was referring to. That they can't be with the land, we want the land.
And I'm sorry, your, your final question?
My final was.
It was on the hotel, I'm sorry. And just, just a quick comment on that, just to say that in terms of, you know, a guarantee notary on, on the hotel 800 rooms, what I, what I would say is, as 3CDC continues the negotiation of this, that it could very well be that the final package delivered to the county and city is one that says, if you want 800 rooms, here's what it means. And here's the number of committable rooms they're willing to provide. Here's the amount of meeting space they're willing to provide. Here's the amount of amenities they're willing to provide. Or if you want, and I'm just making these numbers up, so apologies. If you want 775 rooms at this number of committable rooms and, and these amenities, and this is the gap for that. And the county and the city have the chance to decide amongst that. So it could be that it's a, a decision that ultimately we have to weigh in on with our partners like Visit Cincy and others to determine, is the product that we're being offered for the price we're going to pay, what we want in this community? I think everyone wants 800 rooms. At the end of the day, if there's another product that's brought to us that in some way, shape or form makes up for the fact that it's not 800, but it's 780 or whatever the number is, I think that's something that the board would at least want to consider and make a judgment as to, yeah, that, that sounds good or no, we want to, we want the 800. I mean, whatever, whatever it is, so.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, this is not about, oh, we want, I'm going to the shopping center and I, oh, I just really want that dress and I want, no, this is what we promised the taxpayers. This is what we said when we were tearing down, that we would build right back up. And we were also said, it's in the paper, they said that in this meeting, it was said we were going to get the hotel started in 2023, we're in 2023. We told the World Cup, we would, we signed this document, we would have it ready to go with 800 rooms. So I don't want to demy it down like, oh, it's just what you want. No, what I want is a full package. You're piecemealing it to me. You're giving me over here for Convention Center, let's move forward, let's move forward. And over here, well, the hotel, we'll get around to it. Give me the whole package and let's do it at one time. Why we got to do it piecemeal? Let's do it at one time, that way we can look at the whole picture. And that's what I've been saying, but every, you know, couple of months is, okay, I need you to finance the garage, a garage without having a hotel. But the garage is up, we don't make no money over it. I need you to guarantee 1.9 million dollars and we don't even get the interest or ownership of it. Okay, over here, I need you to get 15 million dollars that we can get going with the development of the look of the Convention Center, we did 15 million dollars. Now it's over here, we need the 1% and it's going to our Convention Center. Well, you ever brought me one thing going to the hotel? I'm saying bring it all at one time. This is not a, oh, you know, a luxury thing, this is a business thing. And I'm just saying, if we told the people 800, that's why I wanted a notary. Nobody wants to put it in writing, you don't want to put it in this, in this document that's binding. We did, you know, we don't want to have it in no document that's binding so we can keep going back and forth. Well, well, I'm not for no bait and switch. If we tell the taxpayer what something's going to be, it's time for the taxpayers to get something notarized. It's time for them to get a contract that's binding. It's time for them, everything else is binding except something for the taxpayers. We can't get 30% rebate because we didn't get it in a binding document. But everything that's needed for the stadium is in a binding document, we got to do it. I don't want to make that mistake again. So that's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking and these are the questions that I'm getting from people in the streets, people who are part of organizations that bring conventions and someone like myself who has brought conventions. We have nothing, the taxpayers have nothing about the hotel. It's a bait and switch and I wanted, if you're going to do it, just put it, put it in here like everything else. And let's vote on it at one time, that's what I'm trying to do. Let's vote on one time that everybody knows what it is, it's above board and we're ready to go. If it was urgent for World Cup and, you know, they don't even live here in Hamilton County, then we should be urgent when the taxpayers ask you, can we, can we get it? So that's all. And we wouldn't have questions if it was a binding document, I wouldn't have no questions. I would be able to go right in here like you got cost overruns, right in here like you got a development fee, right in here like you got a resolution for 1%. And that's the questions that I, that I have. But thank you, I hope you put this on the website, this is helpful, I've been asking for this and everybody can follow along. But I'm trying to move to a notarized document on what we're going to get with the hotel and when we're going to get a hotel. Because you can have a Convention Center, but if you don't have a host hotel, you're not getting the big conventions either. And if it's smaller, but more money, you still will be missing out on conventions. If you don't have the exhibit space, you still will be getting beat out by these other surrounding areas. And so that's why I'm asking these questions and will continue to do so. And I think all of us are working and I, my goal is the best deal for the taxpayers. So this resolution, is this coming up on Thursday or?
No, this, the resolution is.
Or next week?
Is, it's not currently on the agenda, but the recommendation would be, and the idea here is that we want to produce enough revenues over a significant, over a, over a number of months to be able to credibly use the revenue source when we do the financing and so that the rating agencies can see the history of the production of this revenue. And it's not something that is subject to approval in the future. So putting it in place now, we've recommended November 1st, that it would be, that would go into place, into effect, which we've suggested October 5th, simply to provide the hotel years with sufficient time and to be transparent with them that this is coming. We didn't want to do something late October and say that this is effective November 1st. So to answer your question, Commissioner, it would, presuming the board concurs, it would be on the agenda for October the 5th.
Vice President.
Thank you, just a point of clarity. I just, I said it in my remarks, I just want to reiterate it because there's been some conversation about where the money's coming from for this. This money is coming from the TOT. It is coming from the transient occupancy tax, which we call the hotel motel tax because it's easier to say. So, you know, this is a fee that is charged when people come and visit this community that is the funding source for what is the expansion and the renovation, expansion eventually renovation now of the Convention Center. And it all plays together with the hotel. And so I just want to be clear about this funding source. It is not coming from a stadium fund, it is not coming from the general fund. It's not coming from anything other than the transient occupancy tax. And, and also, I, I heard you talk about the promise to the taxpayer. I also am concerned about fulfilling promises to the taxpayers. And so, you know, from my perspective, what has been promised is that we will work in collaboration with the rest of this community, the city of Cincinnati, the mayor, the council members, the folks to the north, the state representatives, all the folks, the private sector, everybody that's been part of this and deliver the best product we can in this district and do it together, do it efficiently, get going as quickly as we can, which is what's in front of us now, knowing that we've got more work to do, especially by way of the expansion. But we need to get going, we are losing conventions, we all know it. And we need to get going on the financing of this. That we, the delay has been that we needed the state to pass legislation for us to allow us to do this 1% increase. We just got that, you know, and we can't do anything before the October date. So, you know, we're moving as quickly as we can to get this going. We don't want to lose conventions, we, we want to inconvenience as few conventions as possible. And so that's, to my view, that's the reason for the timing here. We're all shooting for 800 rooms over in the hotel, I understand your perspective on that. But, you know, as I said from, from the very beginning, the Millennium was standing in the way, it is no longer standing in the way. And so it allows us the opportunity to do what we're doing by way of the Convention Center and a new hotel. So again, I, you know, my understanding too is it's coming on October 5th to give us and the hotel year some time to digest what we're looking at. But yeah, I look forward to supporting that on October 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to indicate also that the 1% tax is not a surprise to those who may have to pay it, that administration has been very diligent as far as going out and speaking to those who will be directly impacted if this does pass. So I thank administration for that.
Thank you, and I just want to clarify, I'm very familiar about the, there is no real stadium tax restricted fund. We self-restricted it. It's not restricted by state law, similar to the, TOT has some state parameters. However, Tennessee, as we're looking at this, the stadium coming up, we got to look at all options, all options to reduce the cost. And the TOT is a possible option if we choose. It is legally allowable. So that's why I brought out the TOT not being so tied up for the next 20 years where we can't really maneuver or wiggle because we got to, the county, our number one, I mean, no one can help us with the stadiums, we own them. We have to deal with it ourselves and we're responsible with the lease, et cetera. So I wanted to make sure that we've got wiggle room because that is staring us in the face, not to say we're going to go with that, but it's staring us in the face and I just want to have all options on the table. Tennessee has used it because they bring in tourism. And, and you know, last night, the Bengals brought in people, they was in hotels and everything else. They do bring in tourism and we cannot deny that as well as the Reds. So wanted to just highlight on what has been done in the past, doesn't mean we got to still do it like the past. We, some of us wasn't here in the past, most of us weren't, all of us at one point was. So we don't, might want to try some new things. So I wanted to, to highlight that. And I also wanted to make sure, Mr. Ludo, that legal opinion that you talked about, about the 1%, because I was looking at how, why can't we do 50% of the 1% to maybe go toward the hotel? And you said it probably could, but you're not a lawyer and you wanted to look at it legally. Can you get us something before we have to vote so we at least know everything as we're moving forward? Thank you very much. Okay, well, that subject matter is closed for today. We're going to move on to, oh, here it is. We're going to move on, American Rescue Plan reallocation recommendations. Holly Christman, welcome back. Good afternoon.
Those are the eligible uses. And just as a quick update for those that weren't at the last presentation, these ARPA dollars have to be obligated by the end of next year and spent by the end of 2026. And you can see as of the end of August, we have either obligated or expended almost 128 million dollars of the 159.58 that we were awarded. Again, I went over this in August, but just wanted to, for the folks that are in the room who didn't see this before, just a snapshot of all the great stuff that has happened since we started deploying ARPA dollars back in 2021. But as, as I mentioned in August, we knew when the ARPA plan was first approved by the board that there were some programs, oh, thank you, some programs that would not spend the entirety of the budget. And so we have, over the past couple of years, amended the plan to address those available balances. And that is again, the reason we're here today. As we entered the third quarter, we looked at the available balances and some programs that had closed out and identified 8.8 million dollars that is available for reallocation. And that 8.8 million comes from a few pots. The first is just over $3 million are from programs that are now closed out and had remaining balances in them. We also, as mentioned in August, initially had an allocation of $1 million for a workforce marketing program. We, we recommend eliminating that given the, the large scale need for something like a workforce marketing program. We just don't feel that a million dollars would go far enough and we think it could be better spent in other places. And then lastly, we initially had 8 million recommended for broadband. We recommend reducing that by four and a half million and really focusing only on one-time projects versus any broadband projects that may require ongoing support. And so since August and during the, actually, the August presentation, we listened to feedback from the board and took those into consideration as we're coming before you today. So feedback we heard during the August meeting was helping to significantly reduce any remaining gap in the regional safety, regional safety complex budget. And additionally, I know Commissioner Summer Dumas has mentioned at many previous meetings about the potential of using any funds for expansion of the Inspire program that was kicked off this summer. And most recently, we've heard from Commissioner Drehouse about potentially immigration housing assistance. So with that, I'll go into the updated recommendations based on this feedback and again, what we presented at the August meeting. Still recommend three and a half million dollars for, reduce the budget in broadband to three and a half million dollars for two major projects. The first being for public Wi-Fi projects, so we would deploy those as grants. And the second is for broadband and CMHA housing complexes. So just as a little bit of an overview, as the board knows, we did a broadband report about a year ago, we brought a consultant on to really help us better understand ways to use this money that would be impactful for our community. They did recommend not doing full big installations of fiber cabling. Instead, they, they recommended addressing fundamental aspects of digital inclusion that prevent all residents from access. So the two recommendations here today are in line with that report, again, including public housing facilities to help facilitate service and expanding access to free Wi-Fi at community, in communities as well as high-traffic environments where service is currently not available. So for example, I know, I've personally received quite a few communities reaching out to me about the potential for free Wi-Fi throughout neighborhoods or in business districts. This would be an opportunity for those groups to apply for those funds. In addition, we, we mentioned the, the regional safety complex. We do, based on board feedback, have, recommend upping the amount from the American Rescue Plan Act. We currently have $5 million in our allocation. We recommend increasing that by an additional 5.4 million to help close that gap. And so here would be the new breakdown of the 31.6 million dollar project. Again, based on board feedback we heard at the last meeting, this was a priority. So we are recommending an additional 5.4 million from ARPA dollars to close, close the gap on this project. You've heard at the last meeting about the 2.1 million dollars recommended for the court technology improvements. We had Pat Dressing here, court administrator, to answer a lot of the specific questions about that project at the last meeting. But really, this is to help continue to reduce the backlog that was caused by the pandemic as well as to do a lot of technological improvements to help speed up hearings in the Court of Common Pleas. We also recommend, as the board knows, our multimillion-dollar emergency rental assistance program will be coming to a close in the coming week, month, months. It is hard to predict exactly when that will end. So we do recommend allocating a bit of money from the American Rescue Plan Act in the event that JFS has expended all of their ERAP dollars and still has some people in the queue. We would like to be able to access a little bit of money from ARPA in the event that that happens. If it doesn't happen, we would of course come back to the board and make some recommendations and, and hear from you on how you'd like to potentially reallocate that money if it's not used. And we also, because US Treasury expanded the uses of ARPA dollars to allow for emergency management and disaster preparedness, Hamilton County EMA recommend, recommended 300, about $320,000 for mass care supplies in the event of one of our disasters, which would be either tornado, high winds or floods. So in summary, we have roughly 8.8 million available for reallocation. You can see here, again, I just went through them, but. You can see here, again, I just went through them, but the big one is, um, allocating 5.4 of that to close the gap on the regional safety complex, 2.1 for the court technology, uh, 550,000 for the housing stability or the backstop for the emergency rental assistance program, emergency management agency, 321,000 dollars. So this does leave about 430,000 of that 8.8, um, for other board priorities. Again, as I mentioned, we've heard from Commissioner Summer O'Dumas at the past several meetings about Inspire, um, expansion as well as from Commissioner Drehouse on, um, immigration housing. With that, I will be glad to, I'll leave the screen up here if there's discussion. But what we're looking forward to is any, any feedback, um, changes and then ultimately bringing forth a resolution to the board amending our American Rescue Plan Act to begin these new programs.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Um, I do have a couple of questions. One dealing with the, um, the wifi. And maybe I don't understand the difference when they say hard, um, wire, cause I thought that was the infrastructure part, but I guess it's not. Uh, I got a couple of calls, but I mostly got one from Russ Harris, who very seldom, um, you know, looks for help. Uh, he's the Avondale redevelopment, um, person and Avondale has, uh, 12,000 citizens, um, and 54% poverty and he had, uh, the word hard cost. So I just want to make sure we're not moving forward with something that would preclude people from getting the wifi. And then also it said this would not have, we would not be able to help with ongoing because we're taking out a lot of money out of that pot. So can we, can you help me understand that? I wouldn't want to vote for anything that would prohibit people like, uh, Avondale or some other areas to participate. I don't even know how big that is, but I don't want us to get out there and we get, we took the money away.
Right, I don't see why this would preclude someone like Avondale from applying for these wifi grants. The board may recall, we did with our CARES Act, we did a few grants with Mount Healthy, Lachland. I'm, I'm missing.
Lincoln Heights, was it?
I don't think.
Deer Park?
Deer Park maybe, um, with our CARES dollars as well as some of our CDBG dollars for projects like this, where they brought in wifi where people could access it. So it would be similar type of program to that. So I don't see why this would preclude someone like the Avondale group from applying for these funds.
Okay, cause I don't really know how many are out there. That's why I'm concerned, I just don't want us to cut down too low and, cause I haven't heard anything else. So a lot of talk about wifi, but I haven't heard anything, the federal government's gonna do this, the state's gonna do, and it's just been crickets lately.
Yeah, well, and we're, we're starting to dig in a little bit more on the opportunities here. I know the federal government has a program to help reduce your bill called the Affordable Connectivity Program. So you can, um, get your bill reduced for wifi service at, at home or your phone service.
Okay.
Um, and they're doing a lot of work in rural areas, but we're continuing to keep better track of that, especially with our partners at Alta Fiber are helping to keep us informed about grant opportunities as well.
Okay, can you let us know, because if they're just doing certain areas, it could close out areas in Hamilton County. We're a very diverse, uh, county with urban and suburban, so.
And I will add, if you don't mind, one more point is if, if the board approves this plan, we will put these grants out and then if we, if we do have, it's very competitive, again, we'll be doing another assessment on available ARPA funds in early 2024. So there's always the potential, I won't want to promise anything, to, to look at, do we want to put more money into that program?
Now, I gotta, I'm, um, I'm very supportive of closing the gap on this gun range and get moving on it. And I, I want to say that as a county, we have been a leader in financial. Yes, we've had other partners, we really appreciate them. Um, but from a leadership standpoint, financially as well, we have stepped way up to get this, uh, completed with the partners and we appreciate them. Uh, but we're talking now, uh, almost 20, with 20 point, 20.4 million dollars that we would be putting up. And I'm supportive of, if it's gonna close the gap, I'm supportive of it. But I do have a question of, uh, what would be the difference? Because these type of projects allow us to do the kind of bonding and, which would free up the 4.5 million. Uh, and, and maybe there's a good reason not to do it, I just wanted to ask why, why would we not bond that project? Or does it, is it a big deal or?
Um, well, I think, uh, it's a good question, Commissioner. I think, uh, typically when we're doing a project of this size, we would consider, um, bonding if we were using general fund dollars. I think in this particular case, given the fact that, um, the, uh, we do have some general fund dollars in, into it. Um, we also have, um, a lot of ARPA dollars. So I think trying to use that cash just so that we avoid a future debt service operational expense i- is the primary, primary reason. Um, but we do have some general fund dollars into it that, um, ultimately, um, could be, uh, packaged into a, a bond issuance at a future time if we wanted to do that. So I think as we move through our capital, uh, programming and our, in our, uh, finance scheduling, that's something we can take a look at to see if that's something we would want to reimburse ourselves for, uh, from the, for the general fund dollars put into that. We just haven't made that decision yet at this point.
I would just ask him because the ARPA we could be doing, we could be able to do two things instead of maybe one thing. Um, but I definitely want the gap closed, so, um, I appreciate that. Okay, well, I will open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you, um, I have a question related to the regional safety complex as well. Um, I too am supportive of finishing out and closing the gap on this project. Was this number, I thought it was 4 million that was being allocated, uh, did I, in an orig, a different document? Uh, can you help clarify?
Yes, so at the August meeting, we, we put down two to four million. Then when you look at the total cost, it was just an error on my part.
Oh, all right, well, that's an easy answer. Well, I just want to make sure I'm not going crazy, cause I thought.
I think Holly's being overly self-sacrificing. I think there was a lot of room for that to go around in terms of that, that, uh, that, that, uh, the, the cost and revenue analysis we did. We, we were looking at this, trying to close the gap and ultimately there were some costs that we hadn't factored in.
I see, all right. Okay, and, and again, I'm, I'm supportive of whatever amount honestly, um, at this point takes to fill the gap because we're so close. Um, so, but, but because that number changed, I, I don't have the old sheet in front of me. Can you help me understand what other numbers then had to change?
So we, initially in August, we had a million dollars for the emergency rental assistance backstop. So that was reduced to 550. We also had a million dollars in there as a placeholder. The city and county held their first joint meeting on eviction prevention and really looking upstream at, at how we can prevent evictions. Um, so we did just have a placeholder in case there was a program that came out of those conversations. Um, so that has been eliminated from this recommendation. I, again, I will say not to bank too much on programs underspending, but again, there's always a potential when we look at, we look at balances in the first of the year. And if at that point, there's a recommendation from this committee on eviction prevention, we could potentially come forward, um, and request, have a recommendation to the board about using ARPA dollars for that particular project.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then lastly, the, um, 430 that remains available, kind of, uh, this also reminds me of a waterfall. Um, so it remains at the bottom of the waterfall. So I, I'm hearing a lot, still, I have been hearing a lot, um, about, uh, the immigrant population swelling in certain parts of the county. Um, I know, uh, I think we've all been contacted about this issue and the dire need for legal services, for food and for housing. And so the idea, um, that has been brought to me, i- and I think the chiefs of staff, um, I think shared this information, is to do some temporary housing work so that these folks who are arriving here don't become homeless. Because right now, they are living, you know, 20 to an apartment, they're living in people's homes and these situations are temporary by nature. And so to allow for us to, and it's similar to what, uh, Strategies was already tasked to do. I mean, we, we gave them some dollars for, uh, preventing homelessness and so they have come forward with a plan, uh, and different strategies related to that. Um, so this has kind of been on the radar, but this population, um, is, um, you know, it's just growing so dramatically in some of these neighborhoods. And so that would be the intent of trying to partner with an organization in the county that is capable of distributing those dollars to that population, uh, kind of on time, you know, because the need is now. Um, but trying to sort through that before that population becomes homeless and we've got a bigger situation on our hands. So that is the rationale, be, and you alluded to me talking to yourself and others, um, about the, the housing issue. So that is a little bit of background related to that.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner O'Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things, first of all, uh, we received 158, the 157. Is that 28? Okay, almost 158 million. I just want to thank the staff and administration for, um, just all the hard work and the commissioners, uh, setting priorities and giving us the vision. And so now we're down to 8.8 million left over, that is outstanding. Um, I'm really excited about it.
Madam President, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting a signal from back there, your mic might not be on, Commissioner.
So I'll start over. Thank you, administration and, um, the staff and the commissioners for their vision, uh, to use this, um, money that we received, uh, through ARPA. 158,784, 158,784,547 dollars, now I can be correct. And I was looking at the highlights, uh, that you went through really quick, cause you didn't want to just stand up there and talk about it. But I don't know if this is on the website or not, uh, but it definitely needs to be. Um, the things that have been done, the projects and resources that have been given out is just fantastic. It's gotta be a better word than that. But as we move forward and I look at the paper, uh, that you gave us, as far as broadband, we thought we were, uh, really not in good shape. But when we had that assessment, as you were saying, we were doing better than we thought we were doing with the, um, infrastructure. But I'm just really excited about, um, what we want to do with the wifi at the CMHA places and also public wifi. We'd heard, um, a lot about young people that were trying to do homework and had to sit outside up under the lights and try to get wifi from different homes. And so this is just, I think, an awesome, uh, delegation of, of funding. Now, I'm a real stickler about this, uh, um, we look at, um, the police gun range and we have Cincinnati. I don't know how that happened. Um, it, first it started at Lincoln Heights Gun Range and then we, uh, went to, I think it's, maybe we went to Cincinnati. And now it's Regional Safety Complex. I really think we need to call it a County Police Gun Range. Even though our customers are coming regionally, all this money that the county put in for this, it needs to be acknowledged. It needs to be called the County Police Gun Range. And I don't know, we, we made it a safety complex because we got tired of hearing that Lincoln Heights owns this and they don't and it, it's just in their neighborhood. So I don't know if we all agreed as commissioners, what the name would be, but I know we did change it, uh, to take Lincoln Heights. When I said we did change it, we kind of discussed it. But, uh, we've, you know, we've put so much money into this. I would recommend that and I don't know how we go about doing that, our, my colleagues can, um, we, okay. But my colleagues can think about that, cause we did it and we thank the partners, as you were saying. But we were not gonna let this on our watch not happen and go on for more and more years. So, um, that's, uh, I think the last thing I wanted to say. Oh, let me talk specifically about Inspire. We originally started out with, uh, 250,000 dollars that, um, the commission approved and it was gonna be 25,000 per group. Um, it would be 10 groups that could receive this money. And I, I remember mentioning that we really want to impact more, uh, communities and more groups. And so it was reduced from 25,000 apiece down to 5,000, uh, per group. And, um, their gratitude is immeasurable. I just think, what if it was 25,000? But just getting that little, uh, 5,000 dollars means so much to them. So I knew right away, uh, that we would have more than 10 groups. So we have about 150 up to 160, uh, groups that have applied. This would be the second round and I'm hoping we can have a third round to complete the process of those who have, uh, put in applications for the purpose of helping their community groups and helping those young people. So I'm, uh, of that 400,000 left over, 430,000 available, 250 of that would be, um, if agreeable, 250,000 for Inspire and that's all I have.
Thank you, um, Mr. Aludo, you wanted to respond to the, uh, the naming?
Yeah, only just to add a little bit of context, um, I think adding Hamilton County is, it is our facility, right? And we are constructing it. I think the, the term safety complex, I think arose at least in part out of a discussion, um, and at the request of some of the officials from Coleraine Township, I think, just to, I think they just wanted to, uh, it was moving to the township, they wanted that, so, but I think adding Hamilton County, the, the Hamilton County Regional Safety Complex, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
But I think your point was that, that Hamilton County should have some ownership of the, of the name and the facility.
Yes, I think that's a great idea, um, and I would support that, Commissioner O'Dumas, I would support that, uh, wholeheartedly. So, um, whatever we gotta do to, I guess, try to work through whatever that is. But right now, we were just trying to get the money, but you're right, don't, you know, we're putting up a lot in leadership role and, uh, our administration, of course, working with partners, but taking the lead on it. Um, I think that makes a whole lot of sense, so definitely support that. Um, you mentioned, uh, are you having a, is a resolution coming forward or?
Yes, it would be up by, um, on Thursday.
Resolution for what? Which one?
Inspire.
Inspire.
Okay, so we, we need to, our offices need to get together, okay. Okay, um, the other thing, I just want to comment on something that I do have some concerns. It's taking that rental assistance down because, um, uh, as, uh, Vice President Drehouse indicated about, uh, immigrants, uh, having difficulty with housing. I don't want to put them against some of the citizens, cause now we're taking their money down to 500,000. So we just need to see how we can possibly, uh, it was a million and, uh, the hard times have not stopped. You know, people think, oh, COVID's over, cause it's not making headlines anymore. A lot of people got messed up with, they still not getting really good, stable jobs. Companies are laying off still, uh, some major positions. And so I just want to, you know, there, the stories are still there. It takes you almost, you know, three to six months to get, if you're at a higher level type of job. And then you come in, then they say, well, this, now this whole department is out. And then, uh, AI is coming in and taking people's positions. So it's still tough out here and I want to make sure that the, not just on the rental, but on the, I want to get more information too on the home, because the taxes will be due in January. Um, they probably will be higher with this reevaluation. And now we got a whole, you know, although, uh, uh, I believe Representative Donnie Isaac, someone, someone else is trying to bring back the 70-year-old where you can have a freeze on your taxes. Uh, and they're fighting, but that's not gonna happen by January. So we need to figure something out. I want to make sure that, uh, grandma don't fall through the crack or grandpa's trying to lose their house, trying to hold on or that, uh, you know, or, or someone who, you know, trying to get between jobs and the rent. Uh, because the landlords have gone up on the rent and some of them not even accepting the funding so they can get more rent. So I just don't want to create, I don't want to take that number down so low. I don't know how we do it, but I don't want that number going to 500,000 so low when the need is so great for people who are, you know, Ben, Ben, who, who are here that's, you know, trying to survive. So I was thinking if we could do both, I wouldn't have a problem, I just don't want to put that number down so low. Yes, uh, Vice President Drehouse.
Just to piggyback on that, so, um, we, I, I would hope that we could pass all of this together when we come to an agreement on, um, these different amounts, cause this is different than what we saw the first time.
Yeah.
Uh, and so maybe, uh, our chiefs can talk through where, it may be if we all take a stab at how we would allocate these dollars, including the 430,000 and then get to a consensus among us.
Yeah.
Um, so that we can pass a package here that, you know, is reflective of all three of our concerns, uh, or ideas rather, related to the total amount. I think that might be a helpful exercise. Um, so I'm, I will do that myself and, and hope that we can have a chiefs meeting and, and, you know, because we can't talk to one another, as we all know. But try to, try to come to, um, you know, some kind of consensus. But try to, try to come to, you know, some kind of consensus. So I offer that by way of moving this thing forward. The other thing is, and Commissioner Dumas, I appreciate you bringing up, kind of backing up to page number three of the presentation. When you think about the total amount that we got, the 158 million, and then the amount of time, energy, and sweat, blood, and tears that has gone into distributing this money has been, and I wrote it down, I circled it and I put "amazing." So my word is amazing for how this money went out into the community, thanks to Holly yourself and other people on staff, I know. But, and the partners in the community. We have a lot of, a lot of partners distributing these dollars down to make sure that we were addressing the needs that we were hearing from the community. So thank you to you and the staff that pushing out this kind of money and making it work and hitting the mark is really amazing. And so I just wanted to highlight, and Commissioner Dumas, I'm glad you brought it up because I too wanted to highlight that.
Absolutely. And so many other counties couldn't do it. We were, all three of us were at the White House. And thanks to our administration, you guys had us looking good. There were a lot of counties pulling their hair out that just couldn't, they were asking us, how did you guys do it? And to do it in a diverse way. I would ask, though, putting it back on my marketing hat, I think the chart is wonderful. If there could be possibly, Mr. Ludo, a video that we could do showing all the stuff we've done in a video package that could be on our website. And also, as you go to NACO and different places, it can be shown what, how we were able to take the federal money and we thank the Biden and Harris administration. But it's one thing for Washington to get the money. It's another thing, our job was to deliver it to the people, the help that was needed. And I think, you know, possibly other counties could look at what we're doing. Maybe we could, you know, send them the video and things that we were able to do. And maybe they could, you know, use some of the things we've done. So I just would like to put that out there. I think it's worth it. I know we've done a lot of the work, but now we've got to have the story out there of what the county, our county was able to do. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, somebody else.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, Madam President, as we look at these listing of items that I think Commissioner Drehouse was suggesting that we look at, I don't know, housing stability, maybe, I think it should be more, whatever, that this could go on for a while. And I'm asking for no delay on Inspire. We've been waiting, waiting, waiting for the second round. And if we're in agreement, not to vote now, of course, but in the 250 for Inspire, and it sounds like we're in agreement for the Hamilton County Regional Safety Complex, to move forward with those right away. Because if we go back and forth, I think EMA should be 200,000. And that may take a while. And then there's another delay for us to do this on Thursday. And I'm just asking the ones that we are certain about if we can move forward on Thursday. Maybe the other ones, we may have a difficulty seeing how much it should be. But I think the regional is one that we are in agreement with and Inspire, we're in agreement with, I'm in agreement with. Rather than delaying it, that we go back and forth on housing stability, court technology, because it'll extend it past Thursday. And there are a lot of people that are waiting in the community to hear for their $5,000.
Yeah, I don't think we're trying to delay it. I think that they're putting a resolution for how we're going to reallocate. I guess that was originally a resolution. So it would have all of the components in it. And I think that's why, I don't want to speak to you.
No, and I'm not trying to create a delay. I, I mean, I think we can get this done by Thursday. It's a pretty simple math equation, I think, from what we've got in front of us. And all of the amounts are going to impact all of the other amounts because we're going to need to balance, right? If we're going to do more here and we got to take it from somewhere. So that's, that was my, my thought. And I, I'm happy to put it together this afternoon and get something out because I, I agree. I would like to get this done quickly, but I'm hoping we can get it done by Thursday.
Well, the goal is we're going to have a vote on Thursday. You said these things can still change.
Yeah.
If we vote on it. But I am concerned about the housing because when does that end? You said that ends this month or end of this month? That's the only thing I was just concerned about. Sorry, Director Patton, welcome.
Emergency Rent Utility Assistance, based on our current projections of the applications we have in the pipeline that we're working on, we're looking at somewhere in mid-October for that emergency rent utility assistance to conclude. And so we'll pivot to our other mandated programs that we offer through PRC and working with Duke and Waterworks and programs that we can certainly communicate to all of our partners what else is out there and available. But the $500,000 was a backdrop to make sure that those applications that we have that we're going to pivot to and process will be able to be honored. So we're just trying to make sure that as we make those projections going into the future, that when people apply and have applied, that we can make a determination of eligibility and honor that application. So just wanted to clarify that.
We got all the money, state doesn't have any more money.
Yes.
We got every dime on the table.
We have, and the feds and Treasury has actually got an email today about moving towards the same thing we're doing locally, which is to look at resources and that are available for community members to look into to try to address the same challenges that they face that you mentioned earlier.
Okay.
If I can, when you say conclude, you mean you will not accept any more applications?
Correct, so that is correct. That's a good point, Commissioner. So when I talk about that, it would be the stopping of new applications in mid-October. Obviously, we still have to process what we have on hand and we will do that.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll have to.
Can I ask one other question of Holly?
Yes.
Is the EMA item, is that new from last time as well? That was on there last time? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Ludo, you look like you want to grab the microphone.
Just to double down on something that Michael said, because I just want to be very clear about this. The 500,000 in the ERAP funding, I think at the end of the day, the hope is that if any of that is spent, it's certainly not all of it. The goal was not to supplement the millions that we've received with, say, $500,000 or a million, but it was to provide, as Michael put it, a backstop for the employees who are running that program, who are constantly, constantly in a game of trying to tabulate, how many grant dollars have we allocated versus how much do we have left? That they could keep proceeding with that all the way up to the end and not have to worry about, oh, shoot, at the end of the day, we committed more money than we have. It was kind of a backstop to make sure that they had the comfort to keep running as fast as they could and stop on the dime. But if we told them to stop on the dime without a backstop, they're likely to stop before they spent everything.
Gotcha.
So I just wanted to make sure that at the end of the day, some of that may be eligible for reallocation at the end of the day if we do this correctly.
Okay, yeah, no, I got that. On the other housing, Vice President Drehouse, I can't remember it because we gave, we gave a lot of money out. But didn't we give some money to some groups about, because I'm just, if we come back, or maybe I don't understand what the housing is. Because if we're saying to residents of Hamilton County, we're ending your housing and then we're opening up new housing for refugees or immigrants, didn't we, I forgot the gentleman that came before us.
Brian Wright came from Compass.
Yeah, and I thought we had done some, did we do anything or we just listened?
We listened.
Oh, okay, I thought we had put something in.
Well, there is, there is an allocation, when Strategies was looking to prevent homelessness, it was part, they have a portion in there for that. To be clear, it's not housing, it's, you know, technically, it's renting hotel rooms. I think this is how this would work, renting hotel rooms so these folks aren't living on the street. I mean, that's basically what this is, or that's the idea behind it. So it's not so much, because I agree, and I also hear about emergency rental assistance, and we've done millions there and that's right and we should have, but rather trying to keep these folks from becoming homeless. That's what it is. And so it's a temporary solution, say, a one-month stay, say, two-month stay, to allow these folks to get their feet, get a job, and get into housing. So it's very temporary because the influx is so dramatic that we've got folks, you know, as I said, 20 to a room. And it's a pretty dramatic situation. The 513 relief bus actually has been inundated by folks that are suggesting that legal aid, food, and this temporary housing is way, way up on the list. And I know they're trying to respond to that out at the 513 relief bus as well.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was out there, yeah, but I just thought Compass, and then I'm just going to be honest, this Strategies to end homelessness, I probably won't be the popular, I'm not happy. Because whenever I ask a question about homeless people, it's downstairs, nobody did anything. I can't even get a T-shirt with somebody walking around to help the people just right downstairs. And so now I'm going to go back and give them some more money? I, I, I'm not too comfortable with it. And I've asked for it and I don't know, the administrator, I've never been any place where elected officials say, we gave $20 million and we want to see something and the person never has to show up and do anything. They just went on back doing what, and they claim those people downstairs, they're just, they want to be out here. And I wasn't buying it. To this day, I've been asking, we done gave them money, we done gave more money, we done gave them flexibility money. And to this day, I ain't seen nobody down there supposed to be walking around with the T-shirt to help people with multiple help. Nobody has shown up. And so I don't know if I want to go give them more money to housing, what is it, Strategies right now? Because the strategy is not the strategy that I'm looking for. I need to see something. And so that's why, and I'm not saying you're saying, it's not necessarily the subject matter, it's who gets it. And I'm just saying, there are people right now that's homeless, people right now that cannot get housing through CMHA and everywhere else. And I don't, you know, of course, we gave millions to rental assistance, but it wasn't enough. It's just still people, landlords won't take the money, people being thrown out. It's just bad. And then Strategies comes up here and gets $21 million and gets on that elevator and go right down the elevator. I get on the elevator, voted for $21 million, I get down there and the guy want me to give him a sandwich and somewhere to stay. And I've been asking, give me one person with a T-shirt. We don't put more money in mental health, we don't put more money with Strategies and homelessness. I need to see something. And I just, I just, I'm sorry, I had to get that off because every time we come here, we have questions. I know Commissioner Dumas has had questions. There's always resistance and hesitancy and no action. And I'm just, I don't like it. It's, you know, I'm just saying, I don't like it. So anyway, I know that's not, you don't have to go to them, I know you.
No, that's right.
Compass came too, and I thought we did something, but you said we didn't do it.
We did not. But so to be clear, we, the money that we allocated to Strategies, there were two different pots. One of them was for preventing homelessness, that was the 2 million. And we just got a report in September, well, September recently, about how they allocated that money. And some of it is for immigrant and refugee financial assistance and service connection. Little bit different, though, than emergency housing. So I'm happy to take a look at this and try to, again, through the chiefs, try to explain further because Compass, Catholic Charities, APNET, some, these, these folks, it's legal aid, it's the Immigrant and Refugee Law Center, have all come and said, we need support in this community for these folks that are coming. Otherwise, we may have a situation where we've got more people that are homeless. So it's, it's more of an emergency kind of thing. Obviously, this is one-time funding, it's ARPA, and so it will run out. But it is different from what we did with Strategies. This is, and, and, you know, if there's not support for it, there's not support for it. But I'm bringing it forward because I've been asked to try to respond to this need and that's what I'm doing. And so if we don't want to support it, that's fine. If we can carve out some of this money, it would be maybe 150,000 or so, maybe not, for this need. That's what I'm asking to be considered as we look at this, kind of what I call a financial stack and try to figure out if we can fund that in addition to what you referred to, which is the ERAP, in addition to the Inspire, and try to figure out dollar amounts for all three of those things that fit into this financial stack. That's what I'm hoping we can get to.
Gotcha. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I know what did they do with the money. Strategies, I mean, they shouldn't be running to the 513 relief bus. Where is legal aid and all this? We put a line item, I thought, in there. I can't remember it. I appreciate Vice President Drehouse bringing up that we did put some dollars. I don't know what it went necessarily, dollar for dollar, what they did. I know it was to be helpful and what they were supposed to be doing. But that was, that's the reason I brought that up when I heard, heard the entity, not necessarily.
Right.
They, and I thought we had voted because we were trying to, you know, be supportive. I thought we had put some dollars toward it. We have not. Okay. Commissioner Dumas?
Madam Chair, I wanted to bring up exactly what you were saying as it relates to helping the immigration population. Commissioner Drehouse, you had that paper that the Strategies allocated so much money. There was one entity that decided they didn't want the money from Strategies. And so that ended up with Strategies having 190,000 left over. And they said they were going to do a RFP to get someone in to take the 190,000. I'm thinking, why can't we just get it from what they have left over rather than allocating some more money from ARPA and not put out the RFP if we're in agreement with the immigration item? Because they do have some money left over.
On, on the chart, Shelter House gets zero under this. So we would want to get clarity as to whether or not that total is the total or, but I see what you're saying.
Yeah, they got zero because they decided they didn't want.
Right. But, but what, okay, so the total is, so that money would be in addition to this total? Yeah, but look, that's, that's fine. I just thought this, it's, it's an emergency situation. I just thought this would be a more efficient way to do it since we're going to vote on it quickly.
I think, Vice President Drehouse, I think what we're hearing is that we, all three of us, we want to be supportive. We're trying to figure that piece out. And I think we thought, at least I know I thought, I thought we had voted on something to be supportive. So I apologize if I didn't realize that. But if this 190,000 is still there, I would definitely also be supportive for that going, for that to be moved as well. So we can, I guess our chiefs get together, the bottom line is Thursday, we're going to be voting and moving forward. And I think all of us are looking at how we can squeeze every dollar or dime we can and stretch it for the various needs that we have here. So Holly, thank you. I know you, you have on heels, you did a great job. Your feet are not hurt. Sorry, Holly, thank you. And Thursday, Mr. Ludo, I guess our officers will get with you. Thursday, we'll have a resolution so that we can move forward. We're not trying to hold up any, all of these things are emergency items. So we want to move forward with them. Yes.
President, if I could just very quickly, not labor the point. Because I know Harry Blanton has tried to step up and get to the day on multiple occasions here. But just one qualification, as we're talking about the, now what we're calling the Hamilton County Regional Safety Complex. The 5.4 million that we are putting fills out the entirety of Phase 1 of that project, which is, I believe, $31.6 million. The one thing that is not included in here is, and I know the commissioners have been talking about this project and following the project, is it does not include the built water line to the site. That's something that the city has continued to talk about as a need. We are looking for some specific utility-funded measures for that. But I just wanted to let folks know that we brought the cost of that water line down significantly. That's not in here at this point in time. But before I would allocate anything from ARPA, I think there are other, some other very directly, more direct sources for that, for that portion of the project. So we'll be back with you shortly on it.
So should we move forward Thursday with that in there? Is that what you're saying?
I think the 5.4 is fine. I just wanted to just let the board know that there is still that, the water line hanging out there that the city has been very adamant about, wanting to make sure that it's included in the project. It's not in there yet. It's not, it's not even in the 31.6. It was never in Phase 1 of the project. It was always to be another phase. But I think there's some other sources of funds for that that we'd like to explore first.
Okay. Well, that's why it's good to keep the debt service and everything else on the table. Okay. All right, I think we're ready for that one. Okay, Aloy, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
I'm Harry Blanton with the Economic Development Office. And I have, I'm here today to present the annual recommendations of the Tax and Incentive Review Council. I have with me Michael Witten from our staff who oversees our tax incentives. And also joining us today is Greg Jarvis with the County Auditor's Office. And we thank Greg for his leadership. He's the Chair of the Tax and Incentive Review Council. So we appreciate him being here. So, thank you. So just for the public and those watching. Um, so just for the public and those watching on TV, as an overview, the Tax and Incentive Review Council meets annually to re- review the tax incentives that are given to our companies, uh, that, uh, to make sure that they're in compliance with the terms and to make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on these agreements. Uh, that up on the slide is a section of the Ohio Vice Code. And then, uh, we just wanted to point out that there are seven members of the TIRC. That's three commissioner appointees, and there's a county auditor appointee. There are two appointees from the community in which the business is located, and then there is a representative from the school district as well. So every year, we like to give an overview of the whole programs. So there are two different programs that we administer, one is the Enterprise Zone, and the second is the Community Reinvestment Area. The Enterprise Zone this year, uh, we can show you that, um, all of the different goals, the real property, personal property, and employment goals have all been substantially completed, as you can see at the end of the, the graph there. All of them exceeded the goals. From the Community Investment Area, um, that is also the case basically with all three goals. Uh, in the employment, it was substantially, uh, met ninety-three percent of the goal. Uh, and that's just because of one agreement, and we will be talking about that in a little bit. At, at the, we also have been asked in the past to, uh, inform you commissioners what taxes will be going back on the tax roll. So there are three agreements that are expiring this year, and that will mean that two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars plus will be going back on the tax rolls. We just wanted to point out, because we are still coming out of the pandemic, uh, that companies have been struggling, uh, with not only the pandemic itself, but, uh, low unemployment rate, labor shortages, construction delays. Uh, there's one company in here that got very much delayed by the pandemic. Uh, so we just want to make sure that the, we point out the Tax and Incentive Review Council takes that into account when they're looking at each company. These are all of the agreements that were recommended for continuance. Um, so we won't go into those because they're basically meeting all of their goals. But we will, uh, highlight some agreements that didn't. Uh, one of them, we will recommend to you to modify, that's Watson's Up in Evendale, also known as American Retail Corporation. Uh, then there are three that expired, as I just mentioned, that's the three that will, uh, create the two-hundred-plus-thousand dollars that will go back on the tax rolls. And then we are recommending today to rescind two agreements. Uh, one is Ameritas in Forest Park, and the other is Deech USA in the city of Springdale. And then with the Community Investment Area, these are the agreements, uh, to continue. Uh, again, meeting their, most of them meeting their, um, uh, their goals. Uh, and that, as I said, we wanted to highlight four different, uh, companies for, for different reasons. But, uh, the first three are in the Enterprise Zone. That's the American Retail Corporation, Watson's in Evendale, Ameritas in the city of Forest Park, and Deech, uh, in the city of Springdale. Deech is the, uh, pretzel company that used to be called Pretzel Baron. Uh, and then the last, uh, point on here, Horder Investment, is a CRA agreement in Sims Township. And, uh, we will highlight that as well. So American Retail Corporation, uh, their agreement was in two thousand seventeen. We wanted to show you sort of the timeline over the last, uh, four years or so of their performance. As you can see, that they committed to thirty jobs retained and thirty-three new. Uh, and, um, they've had a hard time, uh, do, uh, meeting those goals. Um, as you can see, they created seven jobs, uh, in two thousand nineteen, they went up to twelve and twenty, and then to fifteen in two thousand twenty-one, and they've stayed at fifteen. Um, so they've never been able to meet those goals. So the TRC is recommending that we reduce the exemption from eight years to seven years. That is more in line with what they proposed, or, I mean, what they actually achieved rather than what they proposed. So that will be one of the recommendations, uh, for a modification to their agreement. On Ameritas, uh, this agreement was approved back in two thousand twenty. So they had no, um, goals to meet two thousand nineteen, but in two thousand twenty, they agreed to retain five hundred and fifty jobs and, uh, fifteen part-time jobs retained. Uh, the reported jobs were five hundred and fifty-seven retained. Uh, but then, as you can see, from two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, they went down, uh, to three hundred and nine full-time jobs. Uh, what we've been told by them is that because of the pandemic, a lot of their employees are now working from home or they're, uh, have a hybrid model, so they don't have as many employees in Forest Park. Because of that, uh, we are recommending, uh, the rescinding the agreement because they're not even retaining the jobs in Forest Park that they had agreed to. So that, that is the recommendation, we're happy to answer your questions about it. On Deech USA, again, in Springdale, uh, there was, um, an original Enterprise Zone agreement done under the assumption that they would get a certain tax incentive. Uh, we were informed by the company that, um, due to the valuation of their property by the County Auditor's Office, it's not quite as big as an incentive as they thought they would get. So they are asking us to rescind the agreement rather than have to do the reporting in the future. And then finally, Horder Investment Management, you might remember this from last year, but they, um, continue to have a hard time, uh, producing the jobs that they agreed to in their agreement. We will point out, uh, because the community and the school district, uh, supported the company and, and to not change their agreement for several reasons. One is that the investment in the real property is more than fifty percent of what they had agreed to. And the, as, as I'm sure both, all of you commissioners know, uh, the school and the townships are primarily funded through property tax. So they're, uh, they don't have a problem with the fact that they're short on jobs. They also wanted us to point out that, uh, they've already reduced the agreement from ten to eight years, and then last year, reduced the incentive from fifty percent to twenty-five percent. So they're now getting twenty-five percent, and, uh, that agreement will expire in two years. So that's my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions about each of the agreements. Today, we're just presenting the recommendations, you will not be approving anything today, obviously, but.
Vice President Drew House, any questions?
So to be clear, Harry, the order is not changing?
There's no recommendation on that. Um, we wanted to highlight it because last year, there, there was some discussion about it. Um, they have had their, uh, exemption reduced in the past by both the years and the percentage. But yes, there, there is, the, the TRC recommended no change, at least on the community and the school district some.
Okay, and, and the fact that we did something last time?
Right.
Related to that one?
Yes.
Okay. Um, no, I, so my broad comment is, thank you for the work of the TIRC and yourself for getting this in front of us. I think it's important for us to make sure that we're tracking, um, that, you know, the incentives that we agree to and the company agrees to, and making sure that we are living up to our end and they are living up to their end. And so I always find this to be very interesting every year, uh, when the report comes forward from the TIRC related to how we're doing. And, and from the looks of it, we're doing pretty well. Um, with, uh, the company's doing exactly what they said they were going to do, and us giving the, um, incentive to allow for that and to allow for the economic activity in that community. So, and in sort of variety of communities too, which I'm also glad about, um, we need to spread the wealth a little bit here. So, um, so no, I have no questions other than to thank you for the work and thanks to the members of the TIRC for, once again, putting that in front of us and keeping track of this for us.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, good work. Um, I was also concerned about order, and there's really no change or adjustment. But I look at twenty nineteen, now they had thirty-five full-time, and now they're down to sixteen full-time. And maybe I missed it, but why, there were no new ones, of course, it's, which is not good. But why is it so low?
So what they explained to us is that, uh, a lot of their employees have gone to contract employees. So they're not actually considered employees. Those, there's still some positions that they run, but they are contract employees rather than actual employees of the company. So, you know, they've gone to that model.
Well, they're, they will probably be on the radar for next year to look at it. So, thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you for your work on this, and a lot of times, people do tax incentives and, and just kind of go away. And it's good that, uh, the TIRC, we got a lot of, government loves acronyms, don't we? Um, but, uh, for keeping an eye on it and holding feet to the fire, I think that's important. First thing people say, I'm going to create all these jobs. And then, you know, they get the tax incentives and, you know, all of a sudden, no one's paying attention and they don't have the jobs that they said they were going to do. So, um, I just wanted to, to thank, uh, the TIRC and your leadership and keep an eye on, you know, once the tax credits are passed, you know, what's happening, what's really happening. Thank you. Is there any action that we need to?
I think this.
Be on the lookout?
Are you a week from Thursday, possibly? I don't think it's on this Thursday, I think it'll be a week from Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Okay. Where's my? Next, we have, now we're getting into the budget. We have a budget coming up, and now we have the engineer to make your presentation.
May I just, may I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
This is my favorite time of year, it's budget time. It's budget time.
The reason we're here, most important thing.
Yes, and, and yes, you're right about that. And, um, so I am delighted to see the departments coming in, look forward to all the departments coming in, uh, because we have a bit of a gap, from what I understand, to close. There have been, uh, requests that are far higher than what the budgeted amount is. Um, so here we go into budget season. So Eric, you're the first to kick us off, so, uh, I don't know what that means. But anyway, um, just wanted to, to mention that this is part of a long process that we will conclude in a couple of months.
Yes. Actually, you need to come up, our budget director, and set the tone, I'm sorry. So I'm so used to my engineer jumping up with, at the meetings, but, uh. Yes, yes, give us, give us.
This is the first of our departmental hearings, we'll, we're seeing these at least through the end of, of October. Looking at scheduling these through October thirty-first at this point. I'm hoping the folks who come in that day come in costume. Yeah, but these are the first of our departmental, um, departmental presentations. We have the engineer, we have the Court of Domestic Relations with us today, and let's get to it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brugan, our budget director. Okay, now, Mr. Engineer.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I do have a presentation, if you can put that up. I'm going to skip through the first slides in quickly because you, you all know what I do, what our office does. We take care of all your roads and bridges. We do our best to maintain safety on all the streets. Biggest thing is plowing snow. That's what everybody, uh, comments on and what we, uh.
We don't like that pitch, no.
We are prepared for it, and that's, that's the key. Yep, we, we take care of the signs, the signals, the striping, trees in the rideaway, dead animals, all that, all that that is done behind the scenes that people don't think about. We take care of it. We'll get to Lisa in just a minute. Um, we, like everybody else, have been plagued by increases in material costs, supply chain issues, shortages of trades workers. We're working through that. Our numbers, I am glad to say, we're being the first, we're not asking for any more money. We're no general fund money that we're asking for.
Sounds wonderful.
We'll start off first, and that's where we're going to go. And I'm going to let Lisa Dorga, who is our Budget and Finance Director, go through the numbers with you. And I will be here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Messrs.
Good afternoon.
So we are going to overview about five of our funds that we do at the County Engineers' Office. Um, our Road and Bridge Fund, we have two permissive auto-tax funds, one from county and one from municipal roads. A Stormwater Fund and a Major Highway Operations Fund. Uh, before we go into the nitty-gritty of that, uh, as Eric mentioned, I just wanted to kind of do an overview of some of the trends or items of note that we're going to talk about today. Uh, the materials and our project construction costs have increased significantly over the last five years. Um, things like our resurfacing and, um, improvement projects are up thirty percent when we put those out to bid. Um, things like guardrail, concrete, asphalt, road paint, vegetation control. I mean, honestly, you name it, the commodity or the service, it's up in price for us. So as a response to that increasing construction costs and those prices, we're really moving towards an organization that's more maintenance-centric, maintenance-centric, sorry, um, versus bidding out a lot of projects and going towards more like improvement projects. We're taking care of what we have, the assets that we already have versus building them out. Um, one example of, it's a great example of that, actually. In two thousand twenty-three, we are looking to, um, proactively plan for our twenty-four resurfacing project. Um, typically, we would bid out any culvert replacements, um, in that project to the construction management company that we do. Um, but we did these in-house this year. Uh, we saved twelve thousand dollars per culvert, so we saved over two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars using our in-house forces. So that's really what we're moving towards, um, for this two thousand twenty-four and beyond. Another thing that you'll see, and Eric touched on this as well, is that we have had a large amount of turnover um, between two thousand nineteen and early twenty-two. Um, it's kind of scaled back a little bit. We did a wage study, an in-house wage study in twenty-two, late twenty-two. Um, so you will see an uptick in, um, our personnel expenses. Um, this is, includes three extra positions, including a safety program manager that we just had, especially if we're doing more in-house work, um, as well as some pay ranges that needed to be adjusted so that we can be competitive in the market when we're hiring our maintenance workers and route markers and things like that. Um, and then he also touched on this as well, but we highlighted this because we are not asking for any more money from the general fund. Um, we do get five hundred and five thousand dollars, um, from the general fund for our tax map operation. Um, the tax map operation actually is, um, from the Ohio Vice Code mandated that the Auditor's Office perform that. But we have in-house, um, people that are well-suited for that work. So years ago, we took that on in the Engineers' Office, and you just, the general fund reimburses us dollar for dollar for those services. So that's maintaining at that five hundred and five from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. See here. So we are going to look at, there's a lot of data on here, I'm not going to go through this point by point, but it's here for your reference if you want it. Our first fund that we're going to look at is our Road and Bridge Fund. This is really the financial backbone of our department. This is all of our personnel costs, this is all of our commodity costs, um, all of our vehicles and equipment and building improvement costs that we have. Um, you'll see at the large piece of this pie on the left-hand side there is thirteen point eight million. Um, that's our personnel cost. So more than half of our costs, um, go into the people that do the work every day. Um, we also have six million in our other expenditures. So that is a multitude of things, the salt that we put on the road, the fuel that we put in the trucks, um, all of our utilities. We have a lot of maintenance that comes with our buildings and our vehicles that we maintain, um, and then other operating supplies, and, and obviously road materials too. So like asphalt, concrete, culvert pipes, things like that. We have one point nine million slotted for our capital expenses. So we have a very large fleet, we're the second-largest fleet, um, as a department, second to the Sheriff's Office. Um, we have four hundred and seventy-five, um, pieces of vehicle and equipment that we maintain. So a lot of that capital cost is replacement of those vehicles, dump trucks, you know, mowers, track hoes, things like that. And then a small part of it is some building improvements that we need to do and some signal replacements that we need to do in two thousand twenty-four. Um, and then the other two point six, um, million in this expense request is for our capital improvement projects. We put two million of that towards our resurfacing program. And then the other six hundred thousand is for, um, signal replacement and our thermoplastic and epoxy, which is like our, like pavement marking, um, contract that we do each year. So that is on the expense side, actually, you know what, I'm going to move back just a second. So overall, we're, we're requesting twenty-four point four million. Um, but if you look at the upper left-hand or right-hand corner, um, we, we budget for the worst and hope for the best. Um, so we never know how many snow events we're going to get, we don't know how many vehicles are going to break down. So we really budget fairly high on the expense side of things. But as you can see, over the last three years, we've underspent our appropriations by about twenty percent. So yeah, we are asking for or have fund balance enough to cover the twenty-four point four, but in reality, we'll probably spend more around like nineteen point six, twenty million, somewhere in there. So keep that in mind when we talk about revenues here in just a second. So our revenue re-, um, allocation request is at nineteen point one million. Um, you can see a large piece of the pie of that is fourteen point one, and that is our motor vehicle license tax. That's the majority of what funds our Road and Bridge Fund. Um, we do have three point six million in gasoline tax. Um, we have the five hundred and five thousand from the general fund subsidy of the tax map operation. We also have two hundred and twenty-four thousand in permits, fees, and fines. And then a miscellaneous other six hundred and ninety-seven thousand interest revenue, um, reimbursements that we get for fuel, because other departments will use fuel from us, salt from us, things like that. Um, and we'll get reimbursed for that. We also, um, get sidewalk program reimbursement. So if people do not want to pay upfront for their sidewalk program, um, it'll get allocated on their tax bill, and then we get that revenue back there. So just a lot of different. So, just a lot of different miscellaneous revenues there. So, we're looking to expend 19.4, or 19.6, I'm sorry, and then get back in 19.1. So, we are looking to spend down our fund balance just a little bit in 2024, but our fund balance is really healthy. So, our fund balance projected at the end of '23 is 15.6 million. So, spending down 500,000, even a million, we're comfortable with that number. So, the next fund we'll talk about is our county permissive auto tax fund. So, this is additional taxes that we get from permissive auto funds. And we get about 9 million of the 10.1, almost, million. I'm sorry. Let me back up a minute. So, we spend 9 million of the 10.1 that we are allocating for our expenses here on capital improvement projects. So, we do throw in another 2 million on resurfacing, and then there's a whole slew of other projects that we'll put out to bid. Replacement of bridges, other resurfacing things, landslide corrections, call repairs, things like that. We do leverage that 9 point million pretty well. In 2023, we are looking to spend the 9 million of our money. But then, we will also, we have also applied for many other grants and things from OPWC, Ohio Public Works Commission. ODOT has a variety of grants that we have applied and received, and then also the new Sorda Transit Infrastructure Grants. And we are looking to get 11.4 million in 2023 in funding from them. So, really, we're looking, we're using our 9, and we're getting $20 million plus of projects out of that 9 million. We also do spend a little bit here in OPWC loan payments. There are zero-interest loans. And then, we also have our annual geotechnical and engineering agreements, consultants that we pay out of this particular fund as well. So, we're looking to spend 10.1 on the revenue side. That's where we're getting the 9 million in permissive auto tax funds here, and then some additional interest revenue is what we're looking at there. So, we are spending down this fund balance as well, you know, by $700,000 or so. But our fund balance in here is really healthy as well. We have 13.3 million that we're looking to have at the end of '23. And then, this is a very similar fund. Instead of county roads, though, this goes to municipal roads. This is our MRF program, our municipal fund program that we bring to the board every year. Usually, it's in like late spring, early summer. We budget 2.1 million for this program. 1 million goes to the city-county bridge agreement, and then the other 1.1 goes to any other entities that apply. They, there's a rating system that we go through, and then the top programs are approved within that 1.1 million spend. So, we're budgeting 2.1. We're projected to receive 2.5, and that is from, again, permissive auto tax funds that are designated to go back into the municipal roads. And then, some, some very small amount of interest revenue as well. So, we'll actually increase in that fund just a little bit by the end of next year. The last fund I'm going to go into a whole lot of detail with is the stormwater fund. So, we are budgeting 2.4 million in this fund. The large majority of this expense actually goes back into other county departments. So, we pay planning development, public health, and the soil and water conservation district to do, perform a lot of services for our stormwater district. That is to the tune of like 1.5 million of this 2.4 million. We also have a consultant to run the other major functions of the department, the stormwater fund. We only have allocated actually like a half of an employee to this. So, we have some personnel costs in here, but not a lot. Our consultant's about 700,000. Our personnel costs are about 110,000. And then, we have some other operating expenses, permits that we have to do, office supplies, training, things like that. So, and then, on the revenue side, we are looking to get to about 2.1 million in revenue. And this is all off of taxpayer bills. They have a stormwater fee on their property tax bill. So, that revenue funds this entire fund. We are looking down to spend down on this fund balance about $400,000. But this fund is fairly consistent through the years, so our fund balance is pretty steady there at about 7 million. I did talk about one other one. I said, I listed five funds. I've only talked about four. I don't have a slide for the major highway operation fund, because we're not anticipating any expenses here in 2024. That fund is for construction projects for the Ronald Reagan Cross County Highway, or any arterial bridges or roadways on Cross County. County engineer is consistently looking for projects that would fit that. We don't currently have any, but we will continue to look at that through the upcoming years. So, that's allotted. It's been a long day.
You did a great job, yes.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That was very thorough. I do have a few questions, just for understanding. You said that there's, the fifth fund is for Ronald Reagan Highway. Who sets up that as a restricted fund? Is that, how's that, how did that come about?
It's actually not a restricted fund. It's bond sales. There was bonds sold back in the 80s or 90s when Ronald Reagan Cross County Highway was built. And this is excess money that's still in there. And the way the bonds were set up, it can only be used for Ronald Reagan Cross County Highway or bridges that serve connection to it.
Okay, great. That's good to understand. And then, the other thing, when the state did a gas tax, does that come to, who does that come, does that come to your?
Yes, we do get gas tax. The way it's set up in the state of Ohio is the gas tax that the state brings in is split between the state, the counties, and I believe the municipalities. But it's split evenly amongst the counties. So, the county portion is, we get 1/88 of what the state collects on the county portion.
Gotcha.
So, every county gets the same amount on the gas tax.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was wondering. And is that in one of your restricted funds?
Yes, that's one of the restricted. They're both restricted. We have the gas tax, and then we also have the license plate fees. And they're both, those restricted only for use for roads and bridges.
Roads and bridges. Gotcha. Okay. All right. Thank you. Open it up. Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, county engineer and team, for the presentation. So, I'm, looks like everything is pretty solid. I am curious about the fund balances, because they're, they seem to be relatively high compared to the budget itself. Like, you know, when we think about a reserve fund, it's at least 15% of the overall budget, and that's our target. What is your target for the reserve that you carry?
I don't know that we have a percentage. We've typically, our balance has typically been high, because, as you know, Hamilton County is a landslide-prone county. And we have had several years where we've had lots of landslides, and it's cost 10, 20 million. So, we'd like to keep that reserve there in case of roadway failures, landslides, God forbid, catastrophic bridge failure. So, you know, with infrastructure, we'd like to keep that reserve there. It is a little high, and we have been spending it down.
And a case in point would be the structure that collapsed over on the west side. I don't remember. Was it Devil's Backbone?
We had one in Devil's Backbone in Van Blarkham. It's the one, yeah.
How much, do you remember what the?
That was about $2 million, and the road was closed for almost two years.
Yeah. Okay. Just trying to put this in perspective, because those are pretty healthy balances. And the one I'm most interested in is the stormwater, because the, the budget or the expenses are about 2.4. The balance is 8.3, so pretty sizable balance in that one as well. I'm wondering, and tell me why I'm wrong, because we talk a lot about stormwater.
This is, this is the same thing as the stormwater district, these funds are.
Yes, yes. So, as we, as a commission, continue to hear from and struggle with overland flooding in this community, I am, we've had this conversation on the stormwater oversight board about investing some money to try to eliminate or reduce at least overland flooding in some of these communities that we hear from over and over again. MSD is not in charge of remediating overland flooding. We don't have a fund for that. But it seems to me that if we could invest some of the stormwater dollars to do some remediation so that the problem is less than what it is today, I think that, I personally think that would be a really good investment. And so, because the reserve is, tell me why that reserve is so high, because it's, you know, it's...
I was not aware it was that high.
I mean, it's four times the budget.
Hopefully, Lisa can explain.
So, I am fairly, fairly new to the department. I've, I've talked with Todd Long, our chief deputy. He is one who has, you've probably seen a lot of times with the stormwater district. The way he's explained it to me is, as the revenues are collected, they're supposed to go into these pots of money. There's like four different pots of money that those revenues are supposed to go into, and that's what they're supposed to spend those on. And I think part of that might be some of those project things that you're talking about. But he would have to help explain that a little bit better, because for me, when I see it come in, it's all in that one big pot of money. Our consultant kind of runs that piece of the program, is which, which one is supposed to go to mapping? Which one is supposed to go to illicit discharge, things like that? So, I think that's part of it, is that we have committed, you know, based on the taxes that we've already, you know, collected over the years, certain things to certain pots of money. But he would have to probably explain that a little bit better, and I'm happy to look into that with him and...
Yeah, it just, it's striking that the balance is so high when the budget is not. And I'm not suggesting that you don't have a healthy reserve. I mean, we all, you know, want to have a healthy reserve. This reserve, though, is four times what the budget is. That's a super-healthy reserve. And so, I'm just wondering if we couldn't invest some of it to remediate some of, again, the overland flooding issues that we've got in this community. This seems like an obvious stormwater, you know, fund. It seems like an obvious fund to try to think through that and see if we can be helpful. Just a suggestion.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Dewis.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I was just thinking, I wrote a note about you doing a great job leveraging your money. You have a little extra money, and you're trying to spend down to do other projects that you hadn't thought of. So, I'll be interested in that report also. But specifically, we talk a lot about shared services. And I'm just wondering where our engineer department is as it relates to not only providing services to outside communities, but also maybe getting together as we look at ordering salt. I know it would be much cheaper if, Lincoln Heights, I think, once we got wood line and it reduced the cost. And so, the, just look, so you already do that?
Yes, we already do that. For, for, for our salt, we go out in the spring. We, we reach out to all the municipalities and all the townships and ask them if they want to join us in the bid, and they'll give us quantities that they want to order, and we will place them on our bids. Basically, anytime we try to go out for commodities such as that, we reach out to jurisdictions to see if they want to participate with us. We do, a lot of our purchasing off of state contracts as well, so we make use of other people's bids when we buy things as well. So, we try to work together with any municipality, any township that wants to work with us.
Okay, great.
And we do partner with them on our construction projects as well. A lot of times, townships will participate with us on a county road that is in, in the township.
Okay. So, I was thinking, if we gave, listen, we, like, I'm in Lincoln Heights. I'm here now. But it's like Lincoln Heights concept, our plow, we only have one plow. They can call, and you could actually provide services to come out?
In, in an emergency, we, we will assist any community that needs it.
Okay. That's awesome.
On that, the tornadoes up in Dayton, we, we sent trucks and wood chippers up there when they were hit with the tornado. We do joint service, joint services like that all the time.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's all I have.
Do you have anything else?
I do.
Okay. Thank you very much, and you'll get that information, we're all of us. I think that's great questions, great presentation. Thank you.
Thanks for letting us be the leadoff.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. Next batter up. We have our Court of Domestic Relations. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I do not have any of this. I'm as simple as hitting one button.
Did it work for you?
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm Valerie Judge Myers.
Can you pull your microphone closer? There you go, because they're, okay. Yep.
I'm Valerie Judge My, oh, I'm screaming. I'm the court administrator for Hamilton County Court of Domestic Relations. I'm going to keep it brief, because I know that it's been a long day for you. And we really don't have a lot of big requests in our budget, but I want to address the things that you're going to see that are different. First, this is just a comparison of what we asked for last year versus this year and the difference. I will be happy to explain that. You can see, we've got a breakdown. Some of the biggest things that you're going to see is our supplies are going up, our service contracts are going up. So, we recently started using DocuSign. Our interpreter costs are going up. We are getting more requests. So far, in 2023, we've already had 31,000 dollars sent on interpreters, and that is over 3,000 more than what we had for all of last year. We still have the rest of September, October, November, and December. Some of the other numbers that you're going to see up there include changes to our employee salaries. As we talked, I think last year, we asked for a 5% raise for our employees. I think you graciously gave us 4.5% that we could use. So, once again, this year, we're asking for 5% for our employees. And one of the reasons for that, we have a huge number of people coming to our court. We're facing different challenges, whether it's the interpreters, whether it is, we're seeing families that are in a bear space of crisis than maybe they were five, 10 years ago. So, for instance, in our DRD department, we brought in a new support specialist. The reason we did that is our custody evaluators, our mediators, they were just getting inundated. We've almost doubled the requests for services that they're getting over the last two years. And so, we tried to problem solve. How can we get them help but not spend too much money? So, rather than hiring a social worker or a custody evaluator at a higher salary, we said, hey, let's get a support specialist. Let's get them to do all the medical authorization requests and to collect all the documents so that the evaluators can really focus on their job, which is difficult. That person is also the extra FTE that you see, so full-time employee that you see. I know that was a question. Hopefully, that gives you at least a little bit of the basis of that request. And, you know, I've talked to the judges, and the biggest thing that we're trying to do, we're trying to become more efficient. We are trying to get things resolved faster, whether that is through getting our evaluations done quicker so that families can get resolution and hopefully move on to a successful, you know, life after a separation of a family member. We're also trying to become more technology savvy so that we can reduce costs wherever we can. You know, scan an email. Don't copy, don't print that document and then run three copies of it, scan it and email it. We're trying to do all of those things. So, one of the concerns we will see possibly in the next few years is our case management system. I'm sure you've heard about it from some of the other divisions, or you will be hearing about it. That is one of our bigger concerns, and also our employees. We have two critical people that are planning to retire next year. So, next year, we're going to be looking for how to get someone in and get them trained before our computer person and our trainer both retire. We're super happy for them, but it's going to be a big adjustment for the court. And we're going to continue to see how can we reallocate assignments and job duties to hopefully be able to be more efficient and bring resolution to the families in our court. And I think it's really unfair that the, you know, mandated, unfunded mandate has to go after the engineer's office, who gets all the funds. With that, I'm happy to hear your questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. One question for you. So, you talked about the raises. Have you guys conducted a competitive wage study?
We have not. We have not. Informally, I have collected numbers from around the state as part of the Ohio Association of Court Administrators. They send around job postings, and I have kept a list of everything that is similar to where our employees are. But as far as whether or not I've worked with Mr. Aludo to do a comprehensive salary analysis, I have not. But I would be happy to as soon as he's got free time.
Well, of course. No, I wonder because we've, as you know, we've done one internally for the county employees that are under the board. But I, it helped us set a frame for where we needed to be with those employees so that we didn't face a situation where we were doing those raises, you know, year after year after year, but rather we, we did one that kind of level set where everybody should be within the competitive range. And now we're at a more measured increase year after year because we, you know, we, we created a fair place to start for all the employees. Some employees got significant raises, some people didn't get anything at all because they were already right in the middle of that range. And so I was just wondering if you had conducted a, how many employees do you have?
We are currently at 52.
Okay, okay. And so I'm, you know, not, not opposed to the 5% increase necessarily. I just don't have anything to measure that against, you know, without the competitive study to give us a better understanding of how folks are being paid in Hamilton County compared to everybody else. So I was just, just curious. Jeff will have to respond to whether or not he's available to do such a study.
I would. Commissioners, just say, it sounds like Ms. Judge Myers has done some research on this, that court positions many times, depending upon what they are, that might be very specialized positions. And it sounds like she's done some data collection on that, which is, which is good. We can have HR work with Domestic Relations just to vet the, the analysis that was done and how that fits in with the recommend or the request here. So, yeah, we can reach out and coordinate on that.
Thanks.
Thank you. I would also agree that we look at her study and compare those things and not reinvent the wheel if we don't have to. Just a quick question. I noticed as interpreter services increased, is that sign language and foreign language interpreters or just sign language?
That is, no, that is both. That is foreign language and the ASL are all coming from the same.
Okay, so I know the Red Cross, sometimes they, they have a responsibility for foreign language interpretation. So I don't know if you guys are paying for something that maybe they could be helpful in supplementing. So you might want to look into that if you have it. Okay. That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it, and we might have more questions, but not right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brugan, is there anything else for that? Okay. One thing I do want to just bring up as we're, while you're here, Mr. Brugan and Mr. Aludo and probably our HR, is that also I don't think our clerks, clerk here, our two clerks, were not included, I don't believe, in that study, and there is possibly some in terms of the subset of other clerks around. And I would like, as we're going into the budget, I would like for HR, Jeff, I don't know, you would tell who, who needs to do it. I don't know who doesn't. But I'd like for that, as we're looking at the total budget, we need to look at, you know, because it's one thing to go in other departments and say, hey, you need to do this, and we don't have, we're right here with our clerks, and I, we have maybe kept them out in that regard. So could you?
I'll talk with Frank.
Yeah, could you have Frank do that as we're looking at the whole budget? I think it'd be appropriate. Okay. Next, we go into an executive session. I make a motion to go in executive session pursuant to RC Section 12122G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning the subject of pending litigation.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dooley?
Yes.